6:05 PM, December 11th, and I would like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable, Channel 8 and Channel 1072 HD. If we all would like to rise, so pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have any issues in reference to something not on the agenda? Seeing none, thank you. At the end, well, two-thirds of the way, if not the end of each presentation, I will ask for public comment. If for some reason I don't ask, feel free to speak up. I hope that I don't blow it. I generally don't, but if I do, feel free to be outspoken. Next, sitting on the first extended public hearing will be...
Myself, Billy.
Bob.
George.
George.
And Charlie.
And Charlie.
That being said, Charlie, would you like to read the first continued hearing? You two are leaving, right?
Not far from leaving.
Get out of here. I will let you know.
We'll be at the bar.
If for some reason I forget, don't be worried. Counselor.
Okay. Good evening, Chris. Okay, this is December 11th. The first continued hearing is 15 Child's Road. The owner, Martin J. Riley, requests a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure with an attached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 114 parcel 93 Mashpee, Mass., continued from the October 9th, 2024 hearings at the request of the board.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Martin Riley, the owner of 15 Child's Road. The board may recall that Mr. Riley brought this petition before the board at its last meeting and subsequently asked me to get involved. There were some concerns brought by the building commissioner and board members that hopefully we've been addressed at tonight's meeting. Just for an overview of the project, again, it is a raise and replace of a single-family residence for 17417.1 and 17433. This property is located in the R3 zoning district. It's on Monamaskoy Island. As the board knows, the minimum dimensional requirements for the R3 are 40,000 square feet lot area, 150 feet of frontage, 40-foot front yard setback, side and rear setbacks of 15 feet. Lot coverage, in this particular case, lot coverage is actually 25%, not 20%, because under footnote 16, lots that are smaller than 10,000 square feet actually get bumped up to a 25% lot coverage. So I just wanted to point that out. Building height is 35 feet, and your setback to wetland is 50 feet. This lot is wholly located within a flood zone, so your nonconformities in this case are, for zoning purposes, zero square feet of lot area, although the lot itself has 4,000 total square feet of area. But for zoning purposes, zero square feet. Your setback to wetlands is zero, your lot coverage is 100%. Your northwesterly side yard is 11.1, where 15 feet is required. Your southeastern side yard is 9.8, where 15 feet is required. Your front yard setback is 35.4, where 40 is required. Your rear yard setback is 13.6, where 15 is required. And the frontage on this is only 40 feet, which is obviously less than the 150 feet being requested, that is required. So in this particular case, the new project will improve three of the setbacks and will eliminate the other one. So your northwesterly side setback will be improved almost slightly. It is being improved from 11.1 to 11.2. Your easterly side yard setback is being, again, improved slightly from 9.8 to 9.9. Your rear yard setback is being slightly improved from 13.6 to 13.7. Your front yard setback is being completely eliminated. So currently, it's 35.4. The proposal conforms at 44.3, so you're eliminating that nonconformity. Your lot coverage as a percentage of the total area is increasing from 19.25% to 19.98%. It's approximately a 29-square-foot increase in the overall footprint of the structure. Most of that is actually due to the stairs, because the house itself is actually, footprint is actually getting smaller, but obviously, because we have stairs, those are included in lot coverage. In structure coverage, there's a 29-foot increase. So again, the home is not, it's not building code compliant, it's not flood zone compliant. It will be, based on this proposal, will be building code compliant, it will be flood zone compliant. It has been approved by the Conservation Commission. There is an IA septic that's being proposed as part of this, so you're going from your standard Title V to your upgraded IA. There's stormwater management for roof runoff. There are no new nonconformities. We're not creating any new nonconformities. All the existing nonconformities are being improved, they are being improved, even though slightly, they are being improved, and your front yard nonconformity is being eliminated. There is no lawn proposed. I guess part of the, you know, it's all going to be natural vegetation. And the height is 24.3, it's 24 feet, 3 inches. That is over 10 feet less than what is allowed in this zoning district. So, you know, certainly, this project is not pushing the envelope of what would be allowable in this district. And I would argue that the proposal is consistent with the neighborhood. I have brought, you know, photographs of the surrounding neighborhood, which I'd like to share with the board to help them kind of, I don't know who was able to go down there and take a look, but... You know, I would point out, it would be page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. The eighth photo that I have is 58 Monamaskoy Road. That is the property that is a direct abutter. My client's backyard looks into that house, and that is a two-story house. Certainly plenty of vegetation. So to suggest that, you know, this area is only populated by one-story houses is simply not accurate. So I would suggest that, you know, a two-story house, again, that is, you know, well below what's allowed in the zoning district, would be consistent with the neighborhood. I would also point out there were some concerns about the fact that, you know, it has a large garage. You know, I would point out that just on the other side, around the corner, is 241 Monamaskoy Road, which is a standalone, single-family dwelling with a, you know, a large garage. So there's certainly nothing, you know, inconsistent with the neighborhood from what my clients are proposing. If you go up and down Monamaskoy Road, you find garages with, you know, that are sized for boats, if that's what somebody, or large garage, whatever you put in them. So there's numerous, you go up and down. So again, I don't think there's anything inconsistent with what is being proposed in this regard. So, you know, again, when we bring projects before this board that have three of your setbacks being improved and one being eliminated, and you're flood zone compliant, and you're building code compliant, and you're putting in an IA system, you know, I don't know how that can be said to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists, you know? The question before the board would be, is putting an IA system more detrimental than what exists with a Title V standard system? Is a flood zone compliant house more detrimental than what currently exists, which is not flood zone compliant? Is a building code compliant house more detrimental to the neighborhood than a non-building code compliant house which exists today? You know, when we're improving three setbacks, is that more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing setbacks? Are we eliminating a front yard setback? Is that more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists? So, you know, again, we're not creating any new nonconformities, and we're not intensifying any of the existing ones, and we're putting IA in, and we're becoming flood zone compliant. You know, those are big issues for this town. And so in all of those respects, I would suggest that, you know, this project would not be considered, should not be considered substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood under 17417.1, which, again, the three requirements are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, no new nonconformities are being created, and sufficient parking for a resident. And that's what your elements are for 17417.1. And again, it's been approved by the Conservation Commission. So with that, I'm happy to answer any of the board's questions. I do have Tom Bunker, who is the project engineer. I have Roger Brooks and Joel Jenkeah from Cake White Construction, who are the GCs, and Mr. Riley is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, would you read any new letters or any letters into the record, please?
Yeah, what I'm doing, I'm just going to list first what we have, and then I'll individually read each one into the record so we have it.
Perfect.
We have letters from three abutters, one dated 12-1, Dorothy Canoe, and excuse my mispronunciations if there are any, a letter from an abutter dated 12-8, Richard Jackmuth, and a letter from an abutter dated 12-11 for Maurice and Mary Casinelli. In addition, we have written material from the Conservation Commission dated 12-2, and we have written material from the Board of Health. So let me first go to the Board of Health. Board of Health received 12-624, 15 Child's Road. Board of Health, septic design for two-bedroom with IA technology, house is only one-bedroom, no problems with health department. Conservation Commission correspondence dated 12-224 from Dan Kent, relative to 15 Child's Road. Resource areas, land subject to coastal storm flowage, LSCSF. NOI application received approval with a unanimous vote due to IA septic install and mitigation plantings on a lot where no natural vegetation currently exists. The following conditions were applied to the approval: two-year mitigation, monitoring, and maintenance contract with a certified professional. Correspondence from abutters. And although it takes a little time, I think it's important that it be read into the record so that the record contains all of the information, so I'll proceed to do that. First is December 8, 2024, to the members of the zoning board of appeals, from Richard D. Jackmuth. We are writing in regard to the requested building permit for 15 Child's Road. Our property is on the corner of 231 Monamaskoy Road and Child's Road, that's across from the proposed construction site. As longtime residents of Monamaskoy Island, we have several concerns with the proposed construction plans. The plans are seeking an appeal based on the Mashpee, quote, "raise and replace," unquote, bylaws. The current property is a one-level cottage with a shed, and the plans call for an 18-foot boat garage with a one-bedroom rental unit above and an exterior set of stairs to the second level. Clearly, this is not a, quote, "raise and replace," end quote, effort. In addition, the plans exceed the required 15-foot setback on both sides of the property. The design and the sheer height of the proposed property, which takes up the entire lot, is not in keeping with the abutting and surrounding one-story cottages homes, and would certainly block views and impose on neighbors' privacy. A similar structure, perenns seen in the attached photo and perenn on Monamaskoy Road, a two-lane main road, was built on a lot two times the size of 15 Child's Road, a single-lane dirt road, and is surrounded by trees. Even with the additional land and surrounding trees, this property seems out of place, so one can only imagine what the 15 Child's Road property would look like. Given the narrow one-lane dirt road, it is difficult to imagine that a boat could even be backed into the garage without impacting our property and our plantings. We are also concerned with the number of trucks and vehicles along with a dumpster that would be required during construction. We recently completed a one-bedroom addition, and at any one point in time, there are up to four to six vehicles and a dumpster. We had the advantage of having a large lot, and trucks would park on our lot, turn around, and not park on Child's Road. At the last meeting, the owners said that they would not have a dumpster and that a truck would haul the demolition debris away, but demolition debris is only part of the project. Our project did not have any demolition, and a dumpster was required for the duration of the construction. All other construction sites that we have seen on the island have had a dumpster, so we assume that one will be required for this site as well, and understanding where it, along with trucks and cars, will fit is a concern. It must be assumed that as a result, the single-lane dirt road will at times have blocked access to other homeowners and emergency vehicles posing safety concerns. It is our hope that the town of Mashpee will not set a precedent in the property that is not in keeping with its surroundings or the nature of the raise and replace bylaw, and will recognize the potential impacts to island neighbors. Sincerely, Richard Jackmuth and Ann Wood. And there are photos attached to the letter. Second is notification dated December 11, 2024, to the members of the zoning board from Maurice and Mary Casinelli. We, Maurice and Mary Casinelli, own the property at 11 Child's Road and are writing to express our strong opposition to the proposed structure directly next door at 15 Child's Road. The request for the special permit on this property is for a new, single-family residential structure with an attached garage. It is our understanding that the proposed structure is an oversized garage with an apartment above. Our concerns are not only that this large structure will not fit with the current aesthetics, but would be detrimental to the residential conformity of the neighborhood, and attached to that, a number of photographs.
And the third... Charlie, if I could, you want to pass around the photographs, please?
Sure, be happy to.
Probably in the last letter to add some photographs, that way we can take a look at them.
It was, I don't have them attached to what we have in our...
I think they're in this packet anyway, so whatever you can do to pass those around.
Here's some here. Okay, and Bob has seen them?
Okay, good. George? They're in our packet, just want to make sure everybody sees them.
Seen them?
Okay, good. Sorry?
And the third, third and last letter is dated December 1, 2024, from Dorothy Cannon, 221 Monamaskoy Road. Dear Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals members, this letter is in regard to the notice of proposed construction at 15 Child's Road, Mashpee. I have happily lived full-time in my residence at 221 Monamaskoy Road for more than 10 years. I am not strictly speaking in a abutter of 15 Child's Road property, but because of the angle of my house on my lot, the back of my house directly faces the side of the existing house and the shed on that property. I look over a fence and across open space on the large, abutting leach property directly at and over that small house. From my kitchen, dining room, and master bedroom windows, I have so enjoyed my views of sunsets over a little river looking past the small, unpretentious residence on the 15 Child's Road lot and through the trees beyond. If this construction goes forward, I will benign the significant benefit and pleasure of living on Monamaskoy Island. The original notice of public hearing described the notice of intent application as being for purposed raise of existing dwelling and shed, replaced with ground-level garage with one-bedroom dwelling above. I have since learned that the proposed, quote, "garage," unquote, would be an oversized boat garage, making the proposed final structure a huge three stories high. The existing modest one-level residence and shed take up most of the very small lot and sit between similarly modest one-level houses on small lots on each side. Also, I would like to know, given the dimensions of the proposed construction relative to the lot size, how there could be room for an adequate septic system? I appeal to you to seriously consider whether the proposed construction is appropriate to this neighborhood or whether it exceeds and would intrude on the character and ambience of the nearby homes. Respectfully, Dorothy Cannon, 221 Monamaskoy Road.
What address?
221 Monamaskoy Road. And that is the extent of the material received.
Mary Ann, do you concur that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Board questions? Anybody have any questions on board? No. David?
Well, I think one thing that needs to be said, and it hasn't been said yet, is the reason why we're here is not because of the code compliance, it's basically because of, in the last presentation, the owners said that they are using this as their garage with an apartment above, so that is not allowed in the bylaws. So I would like to note that, and we do have to, the board has to decide whether this is enough to eliminate that use, you know, as a garage with an apartment above, or is it a dwelling unit? So I would like, under the condition, on the motion, that we condition that the garage is for the use of the residents of the home only, 100%. And the other thing, the other thing, because it's in a flood zone, I would like to condition that they adhere to the three things they can store in that, in the garage, which is parking of vehicles, which means a car, a boat, a motorcycle, bicycle, could be any kind of vehicle, it's very vague on how they say that, limited storage, which means not something expensive like furniture, or it means stuff you would keep in a shed, like a rake and stuff like that, that insurance wouldn't even bother paying for. And the third one is building access. So we seem to have made an effort to eliminate that. Is it enough? The board needs to decide that. With that said, I kind of want to make a point here. I'm wondering, there are two doors to get into this garage, and that's unusual, and I'm wondering, what is the, what's the object of the second, they call it a man door? Why is that there? I mean, how is that helpful to selling that to the residents? What's the need for it? I was wondering if we could eliminate it.
I guess I would have to ask the client that. I don't know what the definition of a man door is. I mean, I've never come before this board and had to, you know, this board doesn't regulate how many doors...
Basically, there's three entrances. Well, you know, you got the overhead door, which is 10 feet.
Right.
Why, Steve, why do we need, why do we need the second man door?
You're talking about, this is Steve Cook from Katoi Bay Design Project Designer. You mean the door at the bottom of the stairs?
No, the one that's out by the overhead door.
Originally, I had that as only access door, because I did not have a door at the bottom stairs until the last hearing that...
Right, because we want it strictly, strictly for the use of the residents. You know, why do we need to, we don't have two-man doors in any garage in town that I can think of.
Can the door be removed? Well, typically, if you have a house with a garage, you have a door to come in from the outside, and then you have a door to go into the building. So there's always, there's two doors in most garages. So this is no different than any other project that's been...
So you want to keep the door? It just seems like it's useless.
Yeah, because, you know, instead of having to come through that overhead door, come through that other store, you just, you pull your car in, you just walk through the side door. That's typical of a lot of garages.
I mean, my parents' house in Sandwich has a door that goes into the garage, and it has two entrances upstairs.
Let me help explain. David and I met today, and met more than once in reference to this property. So, and I understand that David's had a couple of meetings with the homeowners and you, Chris, or at least the homeowners and maybe the developer and the builder. And what's happening is, in his mind, David, if I say anything wrong, feel free to correct me. He's not at a point where he's comfortable with his application. He has some concerns. He's trying to work through them, but he hasn't got there yet. I mean, for me, I see a 9-foot, a 10-foot door, right? The top of the door is equal to the ridge of the existing house. And for me, and I understand that you've got abutting houses that are, you know, two-story houses, I get it. A lot of them, though, are a matter of right, they were constructed over, under a matter of right, not...
Right, they might not have had to come before this board.
So not having to come to this board means that we didn't have to determine that they weren't more detrimental or were more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Plus, they're accessory to the main house.
Exactly. See, we've got a whole different issue with this lot than the other lots.
But this lot isn't big enough to put a single-family residence in an accessory garage that's detached, like some of these other houses. So they have to work within what the confines of what they have.
Well, yeah, but that doesn't mean you have to go with a 10-foot door garage and then all, you know, well, my point is, is...
Aesthetic, I mean, that really isn't the board's determination.
It's a height issue, it's a massing issue. It's a massing issue.
No, massing issues are lot coverage and height, and we meet all those requirements.
Massing to me, when you have a 4,000-square-foot lot, which this is, and you've got the size of this piece of this home that's being built, this structure, it's, and I understand lot coverage very clearly, okay, which has nothing to do with second story or going up, it has to do with footprints, basically.
Correct.
Okay? The massing of this house compared on the 4,000-square-foot lot is large. There's period, there's no question about it. Now, your argument is, and that's why I'm sure you presented these pictures, is, hey, look at the next door, look at the lots next door. One of my questions to David is, how many of those lots are a matter of right? I think you'll find most.
Yeah, I mean, I think that probably there weren't raisin replaces.
Right, so they didn't come to this board where this board had to say, hey, this application isn't more detrimental to the neighborhood. We didn't have to find that. We have to find that for you to go forward with this application.
That is correct, but I would say, we have had projects further down on Monamaskoy Island that certainly I've brought before this board, and recently, down, you know, down the end, that were raisin replaces, that you had to make a determination, that are much larger than what we're proposing here.
Are they on 4,000-square-foot lots?
No, they're not on 4,000-square-foot lots.
See, you keep, my point is this, it's very clear to me that a 4,000-square-foot lot with the massing of this house, of this property, of this structure, it's large. And I understand David's having a problem with the use, with the way it's being used, garage-wise, building-wise, with doors, he's having his own issues. My issues are for me to find, and I'm curious to hear what the audience has to say, I'm going to listen very attentively, for me to find that, and the biggest finding that I make in any raisin replace is, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Right, but...
That's where I have to come from.
And I completely agree with that analysis, but you're hyper-focusing on the massing, and you're losing sight of all the other things that we're doing that are improving this site, with the IA system, with the elimination of the front yard setback nonconformity, with the improvement of the other nonconformities, that it's been approved by Conservation.
I couldn't agree with you, I'm not, well, I'm not losing sight of those, because I can tell you, the only reason why, for me, is when, remember, I'm considering it, is because of those things. Because I'm sitting here saying, it still is a pretty good trade-off, but is it a good enough trade-off? And I'm sitting here waiting to listen to this audience, and the people that are sitting and living next door, which are, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? Because they're the neighborhood, all right? So if they have reason why it shouldn't be built, it makes sense, I'm listening to that too, right? So that's why I'm saying to you, in this case, it's very important to me what these people in the audience are going to say.
And again, I...
Because I do agree with you 100%, and I'm sorry, but an AI system, flood compliant, code compliant, all great things, and they all have great trade-offs. And so I love to see it happen, it makes sense, love to see the homeowner have this beautiful new home or apartment or whatever, but I also don't want to overly burden the abutters.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, again, view is not something that's protected by this bylaw.
Understood.
And again, these, you know, I understand that they may be bigger lots, and they may have been by right, but this isn't all one-story cottages in this neighborhood. Again, you look at the house that my client's going to be looking directly at, is on 58 Monamaskoy Road West, is a giant two-story house.
Which was built by a matter of right.
It may have been, but...
So we didn't have to find, again, being tried.
Right, but if you're saying consistent with the neighborhood, we're not being inconsistent with the neighborhood.
I'm saying the neighborhood, we have to find that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Right, and how is it more detrimental to have a two-story house here when there's a two-story house next door, and there's a two-story house across the street?
No, we agree that, we agree that, yeah, of course, we want a house that's flood compliant. The other part of the story, Steve, the HVAC system, what is that, raised above?
The flood elevation.
Do you have an elevation on that?
Well, the flood elevation is 11, and the design flood's 12, and the existing rate's 9.5, so... Well, the flood elevation is 11, and the design flood's 12, and the existing grade's 9.5, so, you know, with a, with a 11-foot-high wall height, who'd be mounted on a platform up above 12, so.
Right, all right, so, I mean, so you're raising that up, so we have stairs there? It looks like a lot of stairs. I just, I'm confused.
Oh, no, I'm sure the HVC is a platform underneath, so the stairs are going up.
Underneath the stairs.
And there's a platform underneath the stairs.
All right, all right, so that's gonna, all right.
And Counsel, you were saying earlier, you know, usually the board doesn't get involved, or David doesn't get involved, and he's, you're right, he doesn't, because he's somewhat, he's somewhat concerned about the application.
And again, there's, there's no, there's no new structure here, so there's no use. They're not storing anything there, there's, there's this prospective concern, or speculative concern, that it may be used one way or the other. You know, the bylaw, you know, that's, that's an enforcement issue. I mean, I've never brought a project before this board that has a garage, that the board is conditioned now.
Yes, but Counsel, if we wanna talk about enforcement, David and I talked about enforcement today. You know how hard it is to enforce what goes in that garage, what goes in, it's, you know what? Forget that. Who wants to be involved in enforcement?
But then you're gonna put a condition on that he's gonna have to enforce.
I.
No, I mean, it's, it's a rule, it's a law.
No, well, that's what I'm saying, if it's, if David's interpretation of the bylaw is one-way, then he has the right to enforce that if he thinks it's being violated.
But the point is, go back to my original point, it was presented as a garage for the, for the people that, that own the place, that are not gonna live there. And that was misunderstood as, before they got here. So that can't be unsaid, we gotta, we gotta prove what, the mission tonight is, did they do enough to ease our minds that they're not gonna be using that for their own personal storage, and it has to be done by the residents? So by saying that condition is a condition that's, that they'd be breaking the laws if they, if they, if they didn't have, if they did, if they did use it for their own personal use, they'd be breaking the law if they're putting other things than the three things that we just said. So it's not unreasonable to put those conditions.
Rules, regulations, and conditions are only as good as those that could be overseen.
I understand.
And you know what? I, you know, we've got rules and regulations about, you know, about drainage systems and how we're gonna maintain them. They haven't been maintained once in this town, to my knowledge.
And, so again, I mean, my, my job wasn't necessarily to ease the board's concerns about how it may be used, or how it may not be used, I don't know that that's really your, I mean, you're, I understand the massing concern, and that's, you know, a zoning concern. And, you know, substantially more detrimental is a zoning concern. You know, what I would say about the massing is, again, my clients aren't pushing the envelope on the massing. I mean, they could go up to 25% and be within regulations.
As long as we could, would find that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
No, I understand that, but.
You keep saying they can do this. They can't do anything in this property unless this board finds that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Right, and again, I would just point to the fact that we're not pushing the envelope as it, you know, to the tallest it could be, or not pushing the envelope on lot coverage.
I understand that.
Those are things that would, I would suggest are not, would make it not substantially.
Totally understood.
And you, you look at the property now, I mean, it's a dilapidated building. And this board may say, no, you gotta keep it the way it is. I don't, I don't know how that's creating us.
I, for one, am not saying, no, keep it the way it is.
No, I understand, I understand.
I'm saying that, subject to listening to the people in the audience, there's somewhere between here and here. That's all I'm saying.
I mean, based on.
To keep it the way it is, I mean, I'd rather see it compliant with, you know, an AI system, and code compliant, and, and, you know, all the rest, and, but from here to here, instead of here to there. That's all I'm saying, right now. Still, I wanna listen to the audience.
Right, I mean, based on the letters, I assume that the audience is gonna support what's already been read into the record.
And I, and I get it, it depends on, on the conversation.
Right, you don't always have lots of people come, come out a night to support.
Been doing it, I get you, been doing it for a while, and I totally understand.
Can I make, can I make a comment, just so that I'm understanding this correctly? One of the things that we have to look at, as the Zoning Board of Appeals, relative to the issue of nonconformity, usually pretty much of a black and white thing. We look at what is required under the zoning bylaws, we look at what has been designed and what's there, and relative to the issue of nonconformities, it seems as though everything that needs to be done has been done, okay? But that's not the end of our job. Second part of our job, probably the most difficult part of our job, is a more detrimental. Now, we can't go to a book and say, okay, this is detrimental, this is not detrimental. All right, that's a subjective, objective determination made by, you know, the combined memory of the board, what's out there. And we have to look, in some fashion, at what the people who were neighbors of this new building are saying.
I understand.
And accept, or not accept. So as far as nonconformities, that isn't the issue, really, that we're talking about here. We're talking simply about whether this is more detrimental to the neighborhood, and what do you suggest that we have to look at to make that determination?
Well, again, it's a balancing act, and what I do, what I try to present before this board are the, the factors that make it not more substantially detrimental. So again, going from a Title V system to an IA system, is that more detrimental to the neighborhood by doing that? I would suggest not. Going from a non-flood zone compliant house to a flood zone compliant house, is that creating a substantially more detrimental neighborhood, condition to the neighborhood? I would suggest not. Going from a non-building code compliant house to a building code compliant house, is that creating a situation which is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? I would suggest not. Improving three nonconformities to, you know, versus just keeping the way they are, is that creating a substantially more detrimental situation to the neighborhood? I would suggest not. Eliminating a front yard setback, or just leaving it the way it is as a nonconformity, is that not, is that creating a substantially more detrimental situation to the neighborhood? I would suggest not, you know?
But I agree with everything you say with one caveat. When these people in the audience speak, they're gonna now say what they feel may be detrimental.
Correct, and that's.
And we need to listen to that and weigh that.
Versus what I'm saying.
Exactly, and that's, that's all I've been saying from the get-go.
Sure, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, very simple.
All right.
All right, so that being said, audience, it's time to listen to anyone in the audience who may want to discuss this application.
Don't want them to just reread the letters.
And if I could just say that we've, we've read the letters, so if you want to discuss a letter, feel free to do so. If name and, and address, please.
My name is Mary Casonelli, and my address is 41 Monomoskoye Road. My husband and I wrote a letter.
They can't hear, Mary got turned off.
If you have to speak into the mic. Great.
My husband and I wrote the letter, we own the property right next door. We said in the letter that we're not happy with any of that. So listening to the lawyer, he said that there's a house in the back, two stories. So that would make them, it okay for them to have two stories. The house in the back is not on Child's Road. Driving Child's Road, as you see in the pictures, there's three small cottages. The building that they're putting up is in between the two cottages. So detrimental to the neighborhood. It's, they're requesting a residence, it's not a residence. It's a garage with an attachment on top, with a rental on top. They spoke about the other one that has been approved on Monomoskoye Road. That one is on the main road, surrounded by trees. When the people look out across the street, those are the people that built that and own it, so they look at their own. The back of that is a road, and then people's houses in the water. So those people aren't looking at the one that was approved on Monomoskoye Road. Monomoskoye Road is a main road, there's nobody beside them. Child's Road is a small, narrow road, three little cottages, so to have a garage, garage doors next to cottages with apartment up top, it, it doesn't look like the neighborhood.
So I'm trying, so I'm trying to understand, so you're saying, on both sides, when I went out there, on either side was not a cottage, it was a house on either side. They weren't as small as this cottage, they seemed to be a little bit bigger than this cottage on either side.
Right, but those, our cottage is the original cottage.
I see, they go back sometime.
Yep, my father-in-law built.
And the other one is a small, if you see the pictures, I'm just calling them cottages, because that, they were built as cottages, and then added on to, or we did ours over, so it's different.
So these three, this one and the one on either side, have existed for some time?
Yes. Her father-in-law built them, actually, right?
And, and could you give your name and location?
My name's Ann Wood, and my husband, Richard Jackman, I live at 231 Monomoskoye. And, and we've looked across at the building that's proposed to be raised for many years. We knew Leonard when he lived there, we couldn't, and when Leonard passed away, we knew no one else would ever live there, because they couldn't. And that, so we understand that, that something would have to be done to live, you know, you'd have to put in a septic, you'd have to clean it up, you'd have to do something. We always knew that. And, and when Julie and Marty, Julie bought it, we thought, okay, they're gonna do something, 'cause you can't rent it out even. What we didn't think was that an 18-foot boat garage with an apartment above it on a 400-square-foot lot was going to happen.
4,000.
Four, sorry, 4,000.
Make sure the records.
Yeah, no, no, that's good, thank you. And yes, there is another one, not too far away, but it's on 8,000 square feet on the main road. And so Child's Road is a single-lane dirt road with four little cott, not three, four. Take the one on the end, the grand, anyway, it doesn't matter, 1, 2, 3, 4. You know, and it's, it is just a teeny little road. And so would it be, does it fit with the road? No, it doesn't. And are we opposed to something being built? No, no, but, you know, it just, and besides the fact that, really, we don't understand how you could even get a boat backed into it without some kind of, you know, coming onto our property. So, I mean, I, I have a hard time even backing out of my own, you know, and I have a big lot. We have five times the lot size that they have. And so, so that's our concern. You know, we, we just recently did a construction, so I know what that's, and I know people have talked about, in our letter, we talked about the trucks and things, and those are gonna be concerns with whatever's being built, we get that. That said, you know, I, I don't know how the town, I don't, I really don't know how, who's responsible for any detrimental stuff to the neighborhood based on the kind of construction that would have to happen to put something like this up. So, that's, that's where we stand.
Anything else?
I think.
Okay.
Can I have, I have a question, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
I don't.
How's the time?
I don't think I understand, when you were saying earlier about some law that said if, that the, they could, only the residents could have, store a boat, or whatever, in the garage? They'd have to live there? So the people who would be storing anything would have to live above it, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, that's, it's in, it's a zoning bylaw, I have it right here. It's 17425I1, it says, private garage is an accessory use, is the, is the, accessory uses in a residential zone, a private garage is for the use of the residents.
Yeah, and so the one that's next to us, that the people who own that live across the street, they only let their kids stay up, I actually have never seen the lights on up above, but they only have it for when their children come home to stay in the second level. So I don't know how that would all work. If it's, if it's meant to be a rental unit above, then one would assume that only the people renting would be the people who would have storage underneath. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's exactly what I'm saying, that's my point, yeah.
That just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
Understood.
So at the first meeting, they wanted to put their boat in there. It was said that they wanted to use that as a boat storage.
Correct.
So.
It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, for the renters, or whoever's gonna be living there, it was for their.
Yeah, for their boat, right.
And, and that is against the bylaws, yeah.
And one of the concerns is, it's a 10-foot door, and we're sitting there saying.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Average garage door is seven, eight feet, why is the door 10 feet high? Now, do they have a right to have a 10, I guess, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say I would vote against it because of 10-foot door, but it raises some concerns.
And the other, the other thing, the man door, I mean, the, the, the reason why it, it attracts me a little bit is, you, to get up to the apartment, you have, you go through the, the regular door, and you control the door that goes into the garage. But this is not controlled by, this is a separate door that can be accessed outside the building.
Yeah.
So I would rather see a window there, if, if that would, you know, but, you know, you can have 10 doors in there, is like, you could, you could cut that garage in, in thirds, you know?
Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
The only thing is, all the things that are advantages, like he said, the septic system, setbacks, this and that, that's all well and good, if you're going to have a residence. In my eyes, they're asking for a residential, you know, to have resident. It's not, it's a garage with an apartment.
Understood.
And that lot, I believe, is zoned for two bedrooms, so if they were helping the housing crisis, then they would just have apartment with one bedroom.
Understood, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Mr. Chair, if I may, before you go back to the audience, can I just make one comment? My client, I've discussed with my client, he made, I mean, he, he potentially is open to, you know, reducing the size of the garage door to like an eight-foot door, if that seems reasonable to the board.
I think, I think for me, it's a plus, without a doubt. I'd like to continue.
Sure, and again, the only thing I would say about Child's Road, I mean, the neighborhood's bigger than the road, than what the, the road the house is on.
I get it, but Counsel, just, you know, we were talking about abutting property, and we're hearing now that what's on Child's is four cottages, on Child's Road.
On Child's Road itself, but if you look, like.
So we're talking about, no, I'd add, to the neighborhood, I look at a neighborhood as that road. And I agree, the neighborhood will expand beyond that road, so you have to look beyond that road. But for me, I'm focusing certainly on the road. So if you've got four cottages on the road, now we're gonna take four cottages and become three cottages, one of which is gonna go and leave the criteria of a cottage.
Sure, but if you look at, just like 50, I referenced 58 Monomoskoye Road West. Yes, technically, it's not on Child's Road, but it's a, basically, it's a direct of butter.
And I'm not gonna just focus on Child's Road, I mean, I don't think.
That's all I'm saying.
I think, that's not a neighborhood, right? There's more to a neighborhood than a road.
Correct, and that's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
I get it.
Joaquin Junket, a good evening, I just have a question for. So if I owned a house, and I'm gonna have gas on the apartment, so I can put in, I can use the garage for any, not rented, but I have gas there, so I can use the garage as, I just try and learn this, what the code says.
It says, it says accessory use, private garage for the use, the, the garage is, is an accessory to the dwelling.
Okay.
It's not the other way around. It was presented the other way around, and that's, that's not how it works.
If I don't live there, but I use there as my guest house, right? And then I can put my boat and my car inside?
No, not really, it's for the use of the residents. It's use, it's for the people that reside there, so it's really an accessory to the people who you're renting to. They, they should be in control of what goes in and out of that garage.
Whoever rents the upstairs puts their stuff in the garage.
That's what it says.
Not my question, my question is, I own the house, I'm not renting my house. I'm have, my kids gonna come and stay there a week here, a month there, and then, that's my, my question.
That's a problem.
No problem. I have no problem.
Right? Isn't that a problem?
Well, I mean, this, we're talking hypotheticals on it.
No, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to learn, so.
I don't even know it. I don't know what the point is.
Are you saying that you're not renting it?
I'm not renting, I'm just gonna use it as a guest house.
Well, when you propose it, will answer that question, I mean, you're not making the proposal on it, so.
I'm just trying to learn how that works, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much, any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you, anyone else, Ellen in the audience? Yes, ma'am. If you give your name and involvement in the project, please.
Hi, my name is Julie Silver, and I'm the abutter at 17 Child's Road. I put together a science project to give you a better understanding of the character of the neighborhood. I apologize, I only have one copy of it, but it'd be.
You can probably put it up on the stand.
You can probably put it up on the stand.
Oh, okay. Really, the pitch is. Okay. So here is fifteen Child's, and at the last meeting, we talked about that L-shaped on seventeen, and it was causing confusion. So you can. So that L shape was causing confusion, because what it is, is seventeen Child's Road is this L-shaped right here. So it's a twenty-foot, twenty-foot piece of land, strip of land, that's part of seventeen. But you can see from here, that's the Burke's House on Monomoskoye Road West. So this is seventeen Child's right here, there's that twenty-foot lot right there, the twenty-foot strip. And this is the Burke's House on fifty-eight Monomoskoye Road West. The house is substantial, you can see it. It's a two-and-a-half-story house. To the right of that house, which, which, again, this is only a twenty-foot strip of land from seventeen, from fifteen Child's Road, is ten Stanley Road. Ten Stanley Road is a two-and-a-half-story house.
You can take that out of the standard.
Oh, I don't know if you wanna give me a mic like that, but anyways. And so if you continue down Child's Road, down to the end, you come to ninety-one Monomoskoye Road West, which was an abutter on one of the letters. I also want to point out that fifty-eight Monomoskoye Road West was not part of the abutter letter that was sent in. But anyways, ninety-one Monomoskoye Road West is, is pretty much a three or two-and-a-half story house as well. So they may talk about the four cottages, but seventeen, which is mine, and they're not cottages, they're full, they're, they're year-round places. Seventeen is mine. Fifteen legally is Marty Riley's. Eleven is Mary's. And despite what she said at the last hearing, she doesn't live there. It's a short-term rental for her. And what she asked us at the last hearing is if we could move this staircase, which we did. We moved the staircase over to the other side, and again, that was a little bit confusing because of the abutter on seventeen. We moved that, we lowered the garage, well, Marty lowered the garage door, and we answered, I don't know if you asked it tonight, but we have the information readily available, was the water runoff. And those were the three things that were asked of us at the last meeting, or asked of Marty at the last meeting. So you can see, as you continue down, this is the end of Child's Road, and it's two-twenty-six Monomoskoye Road, and that is a two-story structure as well. And if you go down the road, here's, here's the one that's in, that we talk about a lot. This one is, hold on, let me get it, two forty-one Monomoskoye Road, which is, I don't know, that's probably a fourteen-foot door. Again, we're asking for a ten, we dropped it down. That may be.
So I'm trying to understand, are you saying that the four homes on Child's are not cottages?
They're year-round. Seventeen is a year-round.
They're not, I mean, a cottage can be year-round, but is it not a cottage? I view a cottage as, you know, summery, wintry, it's a, it's a one-story historical building that's probably a little bit on the older side, cottage. It's a cottage. It's, you're going with your shoes off, right? Sand all over your feet, cottage.
I, I refer to it as a house, not a cottage.
All right. So then I guess, so answer to the question. One second. So the four houses on Child's, are they all one-story?
Yes.
Okay. I guess we'll leave it at that.
But Child's Road, the neighborhood of Child's Road is more than just those four houses.
I couldn't agree more. A neighborhood is more than just one road in many instances.
And then I, I just wanna throw out a hypothetical. One of the neighbors, Ann, said they're not opposed to something being built there, right? Because she knew something would be built there. And I guess, so if we took out the garage and put in a two-story house, is that okay? Or, or do we have to stay with a one-story house?
I think, I think the suggestion of the eight-foot garage door goes a long way. I think that works.
Great. We appreciate that. You can, you can pass my science project.
Anyone else in the audience have anything to say?
Again, I'm Mary Castinelli, and my husband and I own the cottage at eleven Child's Road. Julie can refer to it as a house, it's a cottage. They're cottages on that road. And she said, I misspoke at the last, at the last meeting, that I don't live in the cottage. I live on Monomoskoye Road and purchased that cottage to downsize when we retire. Really not anyone's business that I don't live there, but that's what that's about. So I did not, I never said I lived there, Julie, so.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none. Okay. Back to board questions. Board questions. Chris, you wanna say something?
Don't, I'll wait for the board to ask any additional questions, and then.
Board questions. Comment.
Where's the septic now, the current septic?
Uh, I, Tom Bunker's here, he can tell you whether it's.
It's on the plan, but. It's on the plan?
Sure it is.
Maybe it's not on the plan.
I don't think it has a septic, I think it has a cesspool.
Is there a cesspool right now?
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that went in the last meeting, we.
Yeah, I think it's some, cesspool somewhere in the front. The new system's going, you know, in the front. And I'm guessing, I didn't bring this up, are these, this for roof runoff? Disfiltration? So I, I think based on our conversation, probably on fifty-four Kim Path, Tom has, you know, oversized your stormwater runoff with the.
I see it.
Leaching, as opposed to your typical drywells?
I didn't raise it. As an issue, did I?
Right, no, you did not. But again, I think that would also go towards your substantially more detrimental analysis.
It looks to me like he's containing most of the water that's on that side.
Yes.
I get it. That's why I didn't raise it.
What's the difference between a cesspool and a septic tank?
Big difference.
Especially cesspool to an AI system.
Right.
The upgrade is gonna be substantial to the environment.
Cesspool is basically a pit that you put, the effluent just goes into a pit. It's untreated.
Environmentally, this is a major improvement.
Good. Thank you.
No question about it. A cesspool to an AI system, night and day. Nitrogen is, is never, never, and I think an AI system nitrogen-wise is eighteen, twenty, thirty parts per million. A cesspool is like off the charts. So I, I mean, that's a fact of life, that's the way it is.
How tall are the cottages around this property?
Well, the ones that the abutter was speaking to, it's one story, I don't know how tall it is, but it's one story. The one that my client owns is one story, the one that Ms. Silver is one story. So those are the, I don't know what the fourth one is, those are the three that I can recall. Again, on fifty-eight Monomoskoye West, which is right there, even though it's not quite, quote-unquote, on Child's Road, is a two, two and a, two, two-and-a-half story. Ms. Wood, who lives across, she lives across the street, across Child's Road, even though her address is Monomoskoye Road, it's a two-story house.
See, my, that's my concern, Mike, is the massing of that door at ten feet, okay? The cottage that they're removing, if they were to get this approval, looks like to me, plus or minus, the roof is at like ten feet, okay? You're looking at the roof at ten feet of the existing cottage, roughly, plus or minus. And now the garage door of the new residence, if it were to be built, is at ten feet.
Right.
And it goes up from there. So I'm just, I get the fact, lot coverage and all the rest, but I'm just saying from a massing standpoint, it's a big building to, in reference to a small lot, that's why. It wouldn't be considered a big building on a two-acre lot, it'd be small. But on a four-thousand-square-foot lot, it's large.
Well, I mean, I would say that from an actual square footage, the footprint is seven-hundred-and-seventy square feet.
Understood. I have a question.
Yes.
The door that's gonna, that you offered to come down to, what, eight feet?
Yeah, the garage door that.
Does that mean the ridge comes down two feet? Did I hear, yes?
Steve, why don't you come up and.
Three feet?
So, so as that, as that door comes down to, the ridge comes down to?
Yes. Yep, yeah. The only reason there's eleven-foot-high wall height is because of a ten-foot door. So if you drop it down eight feet, everything comes down two more feet.
Makes me substantially happier.
Yeah, so you go from twenty-four point, twenty-four feet, three inches, down to twenty-two feet, three inches, which isn't a tall building.
No, no, no.
I'd say that.
And I, and I think the massing changes substantially.
Yeah. You know, based on my experience and being in that neighborhood, that, yeah, the existing cottage is probably ten, eleven feet high. The other cottages are probably in between twelve and eighteen feet high. Not knowing the exact ridge heights unless you go out there and, you know, run some heights. But, you know, at twenty-two feet, this is a small building.
So the door goes to eight, the ridge comes down two feet, the massing comes down substantially. So the, the abutters have raised an issue of massing, it would seem. We've moved the door, the entrance, to the other side.
The stairs, yes.
Which we did, which was from last meeting.
Correct, yeah.
David, what, what is your thoughts now with what you just said?
Like I just said, that's, that offer goes a long way to ease, ease my mind. I wish, you know, I do, I, I do, don't, don't wanna dwell on that door. I don't think there's a need for it. I think a window would look, would serve its purpose. But, 'cause I, but again, I, I said what I said, I, I think it's, it goes a long way.
Can I, what I'd like to do is, Mary, could you come up here again, please? I need to talk to you for a second. I just, I'm just trying to get some clarity. So right now, this garage door is eight feet instead of ten feet, which means the top of the whole house comes down two feet, which means the whole massing comes down. This house becomes substantially smaller, this building. The building inspector wants to put some type of restriction, and what would that restriction be in reference to the use of the garage? Who can use it and who can't?
I'm not putting a restriction, I just wanted a condition that is used, is used as, as the law, you know, is.
Complies with the bylaw.
Yeah.
Complies with the bylaw.
It's not, I'm not restricting anything.
Which would mean that the person who's renting it can only be the person who can use the garage for storage, correct?
Right.
Who, who monitors that? Like, how is that?
You know, I can't, believe me, there's a lot of things in all towns, not just this one, that is, that are not monitored.
Yeah.
No.
So I'm just, all I'm trying to say to you is, as one member of this board, I'm coming around at this point, because I think the applicant has come a long way. And I just want you to understand, I don't know what else I, as a member of this board, can do to make it not more detrimental, because at this point, I'm at the point where I think it's not more detrimental.
So it just doesn't look like a cottage anymore, but it's.
I, I'm gonna, for me, I write that off as, you know, it's, it's called improvement in life, and you know what, it's, I don't control everybody's property.
Right, right.
So I'm just, if there's something else, if something else you wanna say other than that?
No, I just, I don't think it's a residence. I don't think it's a residence.
Could I, could I propose, what, we're gonna have to, looking at the motion that has been set out, my understanding is that there are two different sets of conditions that will be added to that. One deals with the height of the garage door and the correlative height of the ridge of the home, one condition. The other is the condition that Dave is concerned about, deals with the, the use of the garage area being limited to whoever happens to be the resident of the home. Those are the only two conditions, you know, kind of one from either side that.
Or the renter of the apartment.
Yeah, whoever, whoever resides in the dwelling, in the, in the, in the residence above the garage, has the right to utilize it for storage.
Okay.
And, and the three, the three.
And the other, the other two things that you mentioned.
And I'm saying, as a board, I, I cannot find, in my own mind, with all the other improvements, I believe it is now not more detrimental to the neighborhood. When you look at AI system, when you look at flood control, I mean, flood, the fact that it's flood compliant, new, new, new building compliant with a new code.
So do you think there's gonna be a boat in that garage?
You know what I gotta tell ya, I don't.
Whatever. Does it matter to us?
I don't know if we.
Well.
Probably.
Does it matter to us?
Well, you're right.
Turning the boat around, the factor.
Does it matter to us?
They can put a boat, I don't, they can put any kind of thing.
Well, let's hope. Living upstairs?
Well, it's, if, let's hope that it's a person that lives upstairs.
That's the rule.
Boat, that's all I can say. I don't know.
I liked your offer earlier, when she said she turned it into two, two, two different residences.
Mike, my only concern is I'm not so sure we can live by what if. Because if we live by what if, we'll never approve anything.
And talking about a boat.
What if?
Talking about a boat in the, talking about a boat in the garage versus a car is not a zoning issue. Not at all.
Well, no, what, yeah.
No, but putting a boat in the garage means it's a significantly larger structure.
For me, I think we've come, for me, I think we've come a long way in the application. We've, we've moved the staircase, we brought a door, we brought the building down, we got an AI system, we've got flood compli-, I think we've brought the application a long ways.
All the way.
I don't know. Feel free to speak, though.
No, but I'll bet you dollar to donuts, there'll be a boat in that garage before long.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I understand that. I get it.
It's not really a residence. We're not calling it a residence. It is an apartment on a garage.
Well, but they have a, subject to this board approval, they have a right to, it is a right to do that. They have a right to do that, subject to this board's finding, or this board's decision. And we've, we've made those decisions in the past. But I think we've come a long way.
So your main issue is the garage?
Well, it, like Ann said, it, it would be nice if they put a house, a little house there, and all the things that go along with that. Julie said, like, oh, I have, I can't have two stories. Well, not two stories on that street. I don't know, it's a garage to me with an apartment above. That, it's not a residence.
Well, I'm sorry, ma'am, I forget your name.
It's Ann.
Ann, I'm sorry. And your, and your address again?
Two thirty-one Monomoskoye. I'm, I hadn't heard that it was lowered. I don't know if those were.
The applicant just said that they would take the garage, garage door down from ten feet to eight feet.
Yeah.
That's two-foot differential. Take the top of the house down to height two feet. So they're lowering the massing of the whole building by two feet.
Yeah.
How tall would the building be, excuse me, I'm sorry?
How tall would the building be, Steve? How tall would the building be now that it's low at two feet?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So I have a better feeling about that. Like I said, I.
As, as I do.
I knew something was going to be done there, we've always known that. And so, so long as it isn't like the thing on the other side of us, which is a monstrosity with a cupola on top of it, you know, so that, it's, I'm, I'm not trying to have, be against what, I'm not trying to have the owners not be able to build something there. So lowering it down seems like a good compromise.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right. Any other, thank you very much. Any other board comments?
Let me simply propose the two conditions in addition to what's on the motion before me, to make sure that it's in accordance with what everybody understands, okay?
Makes sense to me.
One, one of the areas of condition from the information from Dave.
All right, so one sec.
Steve, sorry.
Yeah, I just have one quick comment that Tom Bucker mentioned to me, too. With the lower the height, the, the run of stairs is gonna get smaller, so that's gonna drop your lot coverage down also.
That helps with massing, too.
Yeah. My attitude across the board, it's a big plus.
I, Ron, can I accept the, the changes in the plans administratively? Do I have to be bringing to the board?
I would say yes to that.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right. First of the conditions is that the garage is for the sole use of the resident of the apartment associated with the structure.
Of the home and apartment.
No, the occupant of the apartment.
The resident.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Is that correct, David?
It's, um.
It should just.
Be in compliance with, why don't we just make it in compliance with section?
With the section one seventy-four, whatever that was.
Yeah, and that way, whatever it is, it is.
Correct.
Twenty-five I one.
Twenty-five I one.
Accessory, it's accessory to the, it's accessory to the residence.
For the use of the garage must be in compliance with twenty-five I one.
One seventy-four dash twenty-five I one.
All right. And the other two things that David mentioned, limited to the parking of vehicles, vehicle does or does not include a boat?
It does.
It does. It does include a boat. It includes any type of vehicle.
Understood.
You don't have to say anything about a boat.
I don't have to say anything, I just say vehicle.
Limited to, yep, storage of vehicles.
Yeah.
Limited storage, shed, shed items.
So limited storage, shed items can be stored in the garage.
Access to the building.
Yeah, utilized for storage of goods of limited value.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, very good.
What was the third one, David?
Access to the building.
Access to the building. Through the garage, correct?
The access to the building is through the garage?
Access to the building, period, but they're, they're not using it at that, it is.
So we don't, we don't need to say anything about that?
Need to, no.
No, let's, let's, no, okay. And the, the second.
Yes, I think we do, because it, you can't put other uses in there. It's only access to the building. So you can't put another floor in there or mezzanine or something like that.
The flood zone, the flood, the FEMA requirements are what Dave's saying. You can only, like, you know, when you have pilings, you can only have so many, you can only do so many things with, under the piles. I think that's, Dave's suggesting the same thing.
But he's trying to work on a motion.
So Charlie, just, it's.
Yeah, I just want to make it as simple as possible and that everybody understands what we've done.
The only use is tho- those, the, the storage of vehicles, limited, limited storage and access to the building.
Those are the three things.
Got it. All right, and the second, uh, separate condition is that it is agreed, um, that the height of the garage door will be reduced to eight feet with a commensurate reduction, uh, in the height of the ridge.
Reduction in the ridge of the overall height of the building. Said plans will be submitted to the building inspector.
All right.
For administrative approval.
For administrative approval.
Doesn't have to come back to them.
Yeah, I would just put in, does not, because obviously you're gonna have that condition that.
Doesn't have to come back to the board. It's just the overall height of the building will reduce by the same two feet.
Yep, okay.
Want me to try to put it together?
Well, one second. I just want to make sure, we have to close the public hearing, etc., etc. So is the board all sat? Audience is all sat? Okay, so I'd like to close, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Still moved.
If I have a second.
Second.
All's in favor?
All right.
Have a motion in the application, please.
All right, motion relative to fifteen Childs Road. Owner Martin J. Riley requests a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residential structure and replace it with a new, single-family residential structure with an attached garage on property located in an R three zoning district, map one one four parcel ninety-three Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions, motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Law's forty A, section nine. Number two, plot plan, proposed house reconstruction at fifteen Childs Road Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for Martin Riley and Julie Sylvia, scale one inch equals twenty feet. Date August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by BSS Design, stamped and signed by Thomas Bunker, registered land surveyor, number thirty-two six five three, and Peter T. McEntee, civil engineer, number three five one oh nine. Revisions, mirrored house on lot, reduced building height, revised drainage, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Three, building plans, prepared for Riley residence fifteen Childs Road Mashpee, Mass. Scale one quarter, uh, inch equals one foot. Date eleven twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four. Drawing number G one, first floor and second floor plan. G two, front and right elevation. G three, rear elevation, left elevation in garage section, prepared by Catuah Bay Design LLC. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board, except changes relative to the height of the garage and the ridgeline, which will be submitted to the building commissioner for, um, his administrative approval.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I would just suggest, based on what Steve had said about the stairs, there would obviously be a change to the site plan as well.
Yeah, I would say, the overall building is gonna be reduced in height by the same two feet and, um, other ants, and other.
Ants or reductions or changes.
There will be reductions made in other aspects of the building in order to meet said, you know, reduction in height.
Let me leave it this way, that the, uh, one of the conditions is that the, uh, the height of the garage door and the ridgeline will be reduced by two feet. And all changes necessitated by this reduction, uh, in height will be administratively approved by the building department, building commissioner, upon presentation of the plans, and it need not return to the zoning board of appeals.
Sounds good to me, Charlie.
Okay. Uh, number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter one seventy-five of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. Condition number seven, um, that the, uh, the garage will be limited to the use of the resident occupant of the apartment upstairs.
No.
And that it can.
I think it's correct, not that the language is correct. Is that not correct?
I think what we were trying to do is just say in compliance with section, with that section, with the bylaw section.
Seventy-four twenty-five I one.
Right.
Give me the section, Dave, if you will.
Seventy-four twenty-five.
Yes, that is correct.
I.
I one.
That's all yours. That's what the condition.
All right. Yeah, you are correct.
Condition on, uh, the use, uh, being limited and governed by one seventy-four forty-five I one.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Twenty-five one, I'm sorry.
I one.
And we don't need to go into the specifics of that section then.
We do not.
All right, leave it at that. Make it as simple as we can.
That's what I.
All right, and the last, the board finds under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three that the proposed project, as submitted, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new non-conformities, uh, being created. And that, I think, covers all that we had discussed.
I have a second.
Second.
All's in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
She wanna work that? Are you gonna give her an A minus?
It's all up here. Might wanna.
It's over there.
Right here. There you go.
Make sure you sign the right place.
All good, buddy.
Otherwise, you get the wrath of Mary Anne.
I know.
It's trash, right?
Trash.
Okay.
Apartment rental with a boat house.
Yeah. We have so many things that go on in this community and all communities that we do not police, it's unbelievable. But you just can't, you can't police it. Yeah. Yeah.
Mike, apparently it starts with one.
Yeah. I don't know how many operating manuals we've approved for drainage systems. I have a list of some of them since I started this board in ten years, and not one of them has been inspected, and not one of them has been, and not one of those manuals has been overseen. Not one. It's just, there's just no way, it's impossible to keep up with it. You'd have to hire another twenty people just doing these. Okay. Okay, let's get a move on.
I think John and Scott will help.
John, what have you been doing?
I took a nap.
All right, so John's back, that means that there will be three regular members, and we have to figure out, so, last meeting, so we were, I guess this time, yeah, I'm gonna have to, I should.
You're gonna see a lot of me tonight, Mike. You're gonna see a lot of me tonight.
I guess, I guess it will be Mike and the three members, and I guess, how about Bob? There you go. So there's our next meeting, so our next sitting. All right, that being said, Charlie, would you read twenty-six Pembroke Drive into the record, please?
Okay, twenty-six Pembroke Drive. Owner Heidi Delaclos, trustee of the Heidi M. Delaclos Two Thousand Seventeen Trust, requests a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residential structure and replace it with a new, single-family residential structure on property located in an R three in Papaneset Overlay Districts, map one two three parcel seventy-nine Mashpee, Mass. Continued from the October ninth, two thousand twenty-four hearings at the request of the attorney.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant. Per the hearing, public hearing notice, uh, this project is located at twenty-six Pembroke Drive. It is a raise and replace under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three. Uh, this lot is located in the Papaneset Overlay District. So your minimum dimensional requirements are six thousand square foot lot area, frontage sixty feet, front yard setback of twenty-five feet, side and rear yard setbacks of fifteen feet. Lot coverage max is twenty-five percent, building height is thirty feet, setback to wetland is fifty, uh, fifty feet. As with a lot of the lots we see, this lot is wholly located within the flood zone. So given that, we have the following non-conformities. Our lot area is non-conforming, there is only four hundred and seven square feet of non-flood zone lot area. So we are under the, the six thousand square feet allowed, although the lot itself does have total area of nine thousand square feet, but for zoning purposes, because of the flood zone, four hundred and seven square feet. Given that, the setback to the wetlands is zero, uh, the lot coverage is a hundred percent. And then we do have, uh, two, uh, setback non-conformities. One is the westerly side yard, which is four point seven, and the easterly side yard, which is ten point seven. So the westerly side yard is being eliminated, we are gonna go to fifteen feet on the westerly side, so that will become a conforming condition. Uh, we are slightly improving the easterly side yard, going from ten point seven to ten point nine. The existing coverage as a percentage of the total lot area is sixteen point eight percent. That will be increased to twenty-two point eight percent, still under the twenty-five percent tolerance. It equates to about a five hundred and forty square foot increase in the overall footprint of the structure. As with all these new structures and flood zones, it will be building code compliant, it will be flood zone compliant. This project has been approved by the Conservation Commission, an IA septic system is being proposed, stormwater management for roof runoff, and we are not creating any new non-conformities. We're not intensifying any of the existing non-conformities. In fact, we are eliminating one of them. Uh, the height will be twenty-eight feet six inches, which is within your thirty-foot height max. And, you know, I would suggest this is consistent with the neighborhood. As part of my application, I always submit, uh, pictures of the surrounding, uh, homes. So again, when we look at the, uh, the board's charge in this, under one seventy-four seventeen point one, we're not, there's no non, new, no new non-conformities being created, there is none. Is there sufficient parking for a residence? You need two parking spaces, there is. And is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? So again, when we look at substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, we don't have an IA system, we're going to an IA system. We don't have flood compliance, we're going to flood compliant house. We don't have building code compliance, we're going to a building code compliant house. We are improving one setback, we are eliminating another setback, um, and we're improving stormwater management. And, you know, again, it's been approved by the conservation. So again, there's mitigation as proposed in that sense. So with all of that, I would suggest to this board that we are, this new structure, proposed structure, will not have an effect of, uh, or create a condition which is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Charlie, you wanna read letters, please?
Yep, we have letters from two of Butters, um, one dated nine twenty-nine twenty-four, uh, from Kelleher family. And that's, to members of the zoning board, I am writing to express my support for the proposed special permit request regarding the residential construction project of twenty-six Pembroke Drive. As Nabutter residing at forty-seven Unctina Road, I believe this project will be a benefit to the neighborhood and Papaneset region of Mashpee. The proposed design will enhance the overall appearance and value of our neighborhood while in keeping with the coastal character. The planned improvements are well thought out and aligned with the aesthetic and charm of our area, while appropriately in proportion with surrounding homes. The special permit request for up to twenty-five percent lot coverage is in keeping with other similar properties, and the height of the structure is well below the maximum allowable. I believe Ms. Delac- Delaclos' request for a special permit should be granted based on these points. Thank you. Mary Anne Kelleher, uh, second letter, dated ten three twenty-four to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, I am writing to express my support for the proposed special permit request regarding the residential construction project at twenty-six Pembroke Drive. As Nabutter residing at twenty-five Noshan Road, I believe this project will be a benefit to the neighborhood and Papaneset region of Mashpee. The proposed design will enhance the overall appearance and value of our neighborhood while in keeping with the coastal character, the planned improvements are well thought out and aligned with the aesthetic and charm of our area, um, in keeping with other similar properties, and the height of the structure is well below the maximum allowable. I believe Ms. Delac- Ms. Delaclos' request for a special permit should be granted based on these points. Signature Philip George. Uh, Board of Health, relative to twenty-six Pembroke Drive, uh, received twelve six twenty-four. Septic designed for three-bedroom with IA technology. House is designed with one bedroom on the first floor and two on the second. Conservation comments, twenty-six Pembroke Drive. Resource area, L S C S F, buffer zone to coastal bank and buffer zone to BBW. Notice of intent application was approved unanimously due to flood zone value enhancement, conversion of lawn area to native wildlife area. Mitigation plantings in IA septic will enhance resource areas and buffer zones on the property lot. Three monitoring and maintenance contract, uh, with a certified professional for all mitigation plantings to be submitted. And that's it.
Is that the extent, Mary Anne? Okay, board questions? Nobody right now. Nobody has any questions?
Do you?
Um, I thought I had a question, but I don't think I do. It looks like, um, sounds like, I, I don't think it's gonna really matter, so the front right corner of the existing home, you see that on the plan?
Yep.
It's almost like that may be the closest side yard setback.
Kinda looks it doesn't.
Yeah. Not that it really matters, though, when you think it through, because if you look at the ten nine, it's pretty close to lining up with it, but I don't, I'm not sure if it is. You see, you see what I'm saying? Your side yard may be, in fact, your closest point may be that spot, front right corner.
Right, no, I understand. Yeah, I mean, I rely on, the only thing I would say is perhaps, if you look at the lot line, it looks like it may push out a little bit, so.
I, I think in the scheme of things, i- if it ends up being ten point seven instead of ten nine.
Right. It's still a non-conformity, we're still moving it further away.
I, that's why I'm, that's why when I looked at it, I said, you know what, in the scheme of things, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah, as I say, we rely, I rely on the engineer to give me those setbacks, so.
I, I think it's, it's a waste of time to chase it.
Actually, I have one question. We got dry wells going in?
Yes.
Yes.
Front, front, on the front street, it's six foot, six foot diameter.
Is that the big round circle there?
That's one of the better ones I've seen, actually. That's why I didn't bring it up.
Two for two on, uh, stormwater management tonight.
Yeah, no, you got it, you got an A plus. All right, so David.
I'm confused with building height. Um, I'm not sure.
Brian Foley from Clancy Construction is with me tonight, so he can.
And you're saying that the building is good, you got, is that rough, mean, natural grade?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, so this three, so you're saying the building's twenty-two feet?
It, the ridge is twenty-five three above sea level, rough mean natural grade is roughly that. So we're, it's a twenty-eight foot six from mean natural is the height. Does that make sense?
No.
Sorry, it's not sea level. This is the dimension from mean natural grade to the ridge, is that dimension.
So it's twenty-eight, but that, so that doesn't make sense.
What that is, is the first floor is at zero, so that's the distance. What that is, is the first floor is at zero, so that's the distance from the first floor, which is zero, that's what I have to say.
Okay, okay, I get that, I get, all right, now I get it, all right. So we're about a foot and a half.
Yes, a foot and a half below.
Sounds good.
Counselor, David?
Yep.
Audience participation, anyone in the audience have anything to say? Audience? Okay. We're going to go back to board questions again, anybody?
Motion to close?
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Doctor David?
Aye.
All right, motion, reference to the application, please.
26 Pembroke Drive, owner Heidi Delaklis, trustee of the Heidi F. Delaklis 2017 Trust, request a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R3 in Papanisset Overlay Districts, map 123, parcel 79, Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Laws 40A, Section 9. Number two, plot plan, 26 Pembroke Drive, Mashpee, Mass., Sheet 1 of 2, Project 23-292, prepared by Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, client Clancy Construction, Inc., date September 4, 2024, revisions 9/5/24, update zoning requirements 10/18/24, revised dwelling footprint, update landscape and planning areas 12/5/24, add landing and step, remove step to patio, update zoning table stamped and signed by Deanna Bumitri, registered land surveyor, number 49075, and Timothy Santos, civil professional engineer, number 45078. Building plans prepared for Delaklis residents, 26 Pembroke Drive, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by Clancy Construction, Falmouth, Mass., A0.0 cover sheet, A0.1 exterior perspective, A0.2 Axon views, A1.1 first floor plan, A1.2 second floor plan, A2.0 exterior elevations, A2.1 exterior elevations, A3.0 square footage. Condition and all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Building Department review in reference to Tree Bylaw, Chapter 175 of the Town Bylaws prior to the applicant, application of a building permit. Number seven, the board finds under 17417.1 and 17433 that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new non-conformities being created.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All's a favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay, let's get Scott.
Build, build, build.
Scott can come back in again. Let's see, John. Scotty.
Hey, Chairman, it's Marius, by the way. Name is Marius, he's not here tonight. You can call him Morris or something.
Close enough. If it doesn't work, he needs to change his name.
Mary Ann, why don't you grab Scott?
I signed a power of attorney.
Nice.
I'm sorry? I have no idea. He went to the manager.
You know who's going to go? Who's our lawyer? Brian Wall.
Yeah, who's on this?
Oh, yeah.
Bob and Mike. Got it. Scott, welcome back.
There you go.
We almost made it to the last hearing.
My first application is a pain in the butt.
Everyone is watching a movie out there.
What did I do?
Crap in front of me.
All right, so who's sitting on the next meeting?
We got to wait for Cash. He's going to sign that.
So let's think this through, so the last was three, Mike, and Cash, right?
Cash.
So we'll go three, no, it'll be four. Plus George, I guess, how's that?
The row.
Yeah. Five of us right now.
The paper shuffle. Come on, Cash, I'm all right, buddy.
So why were you late?
You know what? I just messed up with my meeting time.
Oh, I see.
Why does he have to explain to you?
Why? Because the first time I see him, I see him out in New Seabird, I said, you going tonight? You know what he says? I'm not going. What do you mean, going tonight? He had to play with me huge, didn't you? That's why. Now I'm even.
Hey, I gave an honest answer.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's just move forward. So sitting is going to be five members right here. All right, Charlie, would you read 416 Monomoskoy Road, is that, no, 24 Secant Point Road, please?
Secant Point, and that's to be continued, so. All right, let me, 24 Secant Point Road, owners Joshua and Nicole Delman, request a variance under 17431, land space requirements and 17433, setback to wetlands of the zoning bylaws to vary the front side and rear setbacks, lot size, and frontage requirements to allow for construction of a single-family residence on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 35, Mashpee, Mass., continued from November 13, 2024 hearings at the request of the attorney. And there is a letter from the Office of Dun &amp; Corain, Mick Tickleton, Garner, dated December 6, 2024, asking for a continuance.
So the architect is still working on the plans, there was, after it went through conservation, there were, I think, I hate to use this word significant, but there were, there were changes that have obviously necessitated the architect working a little bit harder to make those changes, so they're not quite ready yet, we're hoping they'll be ready at the January 8 hearing.
We look forward to the application, Counselor, we really do.
As do I.
Step down on two, then a continuation. Step down on two, then a continuation. Glad I came.
There you go. All right, so would you like to read the letter, I guess?
Yeah, Dear Chairman Bonvy, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for Wednesday, December 11, 2024, be further continued until Wednesday, January 8, 2025, as the applicant is still waiting for revised plans to come from the architect. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain, Attorney at law.
And when was that extended till?
January 8, I believe.
Is that okay? Okay, so I have a motion, can I get a motion to accept the letter and the extension to January 8?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All's a favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, so George, I guess we'll just continue the next app, we'll keep the four right here for the next one, how's that? So Charlie, would you read 416 Monomoskoy?
Yep. Okay, again, on the continued hearings, 416 Monomoskoy Road, owners Kirk John Franklin and Don Gordon Franklin, trustees of the Seaside Realty Trust, request a written finding under 17417, 17433 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage and deck to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 47, Mashpee, Mass., continued from the November 13, 2024 hearings at the request of the attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant. If the board members recall, we were here last time for the written finding on this garage and deck addition. The building commissioner raised the, the point that the site plan incorrectly measured the front yard setback to the stairs, and that asked us to go back and determine where the furthest point is from where it needs to be measured in accordance with the bylaw. So Mike Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, is the engineer on the project, he went back. He did send us a revised plan, which we have filed, and this front right, this front left corner, I guess, if you're looking this way, front right, if you're facing house, is 39 and a half feet, which is still less than the 40 feet, and is still a non-conforming condition, so we do not need any variance relief.
And there's no new non-conformities being created?
No, that is correct.
And just to understand, can you go through the, just real quick, the non-conformities and how you dealt with them, please?
Yes, so again, it's in the R3 zoning, 40,150 feet of frontage, 40 front yard, 15 side, 15 rear, 20% lot, 50 is wetland. So there were three dimensional non-conformities. One is, the first is zero setback to the wetland because we're in the flood zone, the last, the second is the 100% lot coverage because we're in the flood zone, and then there was the front yard setback. We had measured that to the stairs at 34.3, and that's not the way it's supposed to be calculated. So we went back, Mike recalculated it, and 39 and a half, so it's still a non-conforming condition. And then the lot coverage as, or the coverage as a percentage of the total lot area is going up 472 square feet from 7.7 to 9.8.
Do you have any questions? David? Board have any questions?
Nope, no.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Having none. So really, we asked you to do one thing and you did it, that was to confirm the front yard setback of the, to the steps, yes. All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
We have two, two Board of Health and Conservation.
Oh, new?
They're here, yep. That dated.
The last one.
I'm sure they were read into the record the last time, there's been nothing.
The only reason I say is dated 12/6.
Then, see, I'm, I'm an area, and I would have thought that they would have all been inclusive of the last one.
I think what they do is when, when Mary Ann sends out the new agenda, they re-comment.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same.
Re-comment.
But for the record.
All right, well, we need to do it.
416, yeah, 416 Monomoskoy Road, Board of Health, house to remain four-bedroom, two on the first floor, two on the second floor, third floor, loft, not pit, habitation.
Is that a ditto comment?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And 416 Monomoskoy Road, from the conservation, resource areas, LSCSF and buffer zone to Salt Marsh. NOI application was approved unanimously with the condition of a three-year mitigation and monitoring contract with a certified professional, and all certificate of compliances achieved prior to construction commencement. Installation of dry wells to control roof runoff, and a drain at the cobble apron, and the vast amount of mitigation plantings near the Salt Marsh will enhance the resource areas.
I presume the same ditto comment?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
But we certainly, you know, all comments read into the record, part of the condition we need, so.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
Nothing else.
All right, so motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second, please.
Take it.
All in favor? All right, motion in reference to the application, please.
Let me see if I can find it.
Paper. You want one? I got one for you, Charlie.
Oh, got it, all set. Sorry. Okay. Motion relative to 416 Monomoskoy Road, owners Kirk John Franklin and Don Gordon Franklin, trustees of the Seaside Realty Trust, request a written finding under 17417 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage and deck to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 47, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. Number one, motion, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Law 40A, Section 6. Number two, site plan, proposed addition 416 Monomoskoy Road, prepared for Don Franklin, date 10/16/24, add dry wells, dry well detail and proposed spot grades, 12/4/24, add front yard setback to existing house, prepared by Falmouth Engineering, plan date September 9, 2024, plan scale 1 inch equals 20 feet. Number three, floor plans, project Franklin Residence, 416 Monomoskoy Road, Mashpee, Mass., Sheet A1, lower floor plans, A2, upper floor plan, A3, attic floor plan, A4 elevation, A5 elevations, prepared by Northside Design Associates, Structural Engineer, Tailored Design LLC, date 9/24/24. Condition and all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Building Department review in reference to the Tree Bylaw, Chapter 175 of the Town Bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds under 17417 and 17433 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, yeah, stepping down, so, let me see.
Scott stepping down.
I'm done stepping down for the night. I'm done stepping down for the night. If I was, I would have left.
Are you stepping down, man?
He is. He's in conflict, possibly.
I am, yeah. He's a conflicted guy.
Who, me?
He is. What?
Sign.
See you in a bit.
You're welcome.
Wow, I would hate to have you have you stand out there too long.
The seats. Bring your phone.
It's not my fault.
All the paper gone?
Seat's still warm.
Oh, okay. All right, so sitting on this one, right? So let's figure this one out.
Three plus two.
It'll be three, yeah, three plus two, exactly, so why don't we go three, Mike, you sat on one tonight, all right, did you? All right, so why don't we do three, Charlie and Bob? How's that? So it'll be us three, Charlie, Bob. So would you read the next new hearing into the record, please, Charlie?
Okay, we are on new hearings for December 11, 2024, 17 Monomoskoy Road West. Owners Biara D. and Elina C. St. John. Trustees of the Biara St. John Trust, request a special permit under 17417.1, 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, excuse me, map 114, parcel 20, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the St. Johns, who are the owners of 17 Monomoskoy Road West. This is a raise and replace under 17417.1 and 17433. We are located in the R3 zoning district, this is another project on Monomoskoy Island. Under the R3 zoning district, your minimum dimensional requirements are 40,000 square feet for lot size, 150 feet of frontage, 40 feet for a front yard setback, 15 feet for a rear and side yard setback, lot coverage of 20%, building height 35 feet, setback to wetland 50 feet. Another lot that is located wholly within a flood zone, so we do have a lot area non-conformity of zero square feet. The actual total area of the lot is 18,675 square feet, but again, for zoning purposes, zero square feet because we are completely within the flood zone. But again, total lot. But again, total lot, total area, eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five square feet. Given the flood zone, we're zero square feet, and lot coverage is a hundred percent, and then we're, our only dimensional non-conformity is the front yard setback of three point two feet. So we are proposing a new single-family dwelling. Your coverage as a percentage of the total area will be going from eight point three percent to seventeen point five percent, still within your twenty percent tolerance. Another home that's going to be building code compliant and flood zone compliant, a project that has been approved by the Conservation Commission, another project going from a standard Title V to an IA system. We're not creating any new non-conformities. As always, I provide photos of surrounding neighborhood. I don't think that the new project is inconsistent with the projects that you see on Monomoskoye Island. Height is thirty-two feet five inches, which is well within the thirty-five feet maximum. So again, when the Board looks at these projects under one seventy-four seventeen point one, are we creating any new non-conformities? No, we're not. Is there sufficient parking for residents, which is two cars? Yes, we do. And is the project substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists? And in this case, again, I would suggest we're not, because again, we're going to an IA system where one doesn't exist, we're, we're becoming flood zone compliant where the existing structure is not, we're becoming building code compliant where the existing structure is not, we're not creating any new non-conformities, and we're, you know, within the tolerances for, for coverage. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the Board.
Charlie, letters, please.
Yeah, what we have is, we have Board of Health, we have some correspondence from the, Joe Pelletier, Fire Department. We have Building Commissioner, and we have a letter from the other side of the street, dated twelve three, so let me get into those. The abutter, our letter is December third, two thousand twenty-four, from Diane Dennean. I am writing this letter in support of the proposed raise and replace project at seventeen Monomoskoye Road West. While I am not a director abutter, I did want to write this letter in support. Biara and Elena were kind enough to share with me their plans for the property approximately a year ago. I have reviewed the plans and believe it is in keeping with the neighborhood and necessary to accommodate their family size for years to come. While I understand their project requires relief from certain setback requirements under the zoning, I think the project is a net benefit to the neighborhood and the environment given the mitigation plantings and upgrades to septic system that should enhance the overall water quality. Size and scale of the proposed home is reasonable and in fact less dense than most of the homes that have been built down at the end of the island. I know that there have been discussions about use of the right-of-way for others, but I want to make it clear that we do not support expansion and opening of the right-of-way to the north that would connect back to the main Monomoskoye Road. This would promote additional drive-through traffic and result in the removal of a significant number of mature trees and natural vegetative land. Closing, I hope you approve this project. Diane Dennean. And we have conservation comments relative to seventeen, dated twelve two, two thousand twenty-four, relative to seventeen Monomoskoye Road West. Resource areas, LSCSF, Buffer Zone to Salt Marsh, area of ecological critical concern AC/EC, and Buffer Zone to bordering vegetated wetland, BVW. Notice of intent application for raise and replace of dwelling with attached garage, IA septic, drywells, mitigation plantings, and restoration plantings. Remand of NOI was approved unanimously due to a waiver of regulations request for LSCSF performance standards. Concerns over vertical walls and LSCF was satisfied with waiver request and the amount of native plantings going in place as well enhanced protection to native vegetation during construction. And Board of Health, relative to seventeen Monomoskoye Road West. Board of Health, house is five bedroom, one on the first floor, three on the second floor, and one above the garage area. Septic is designed for five bedroom with nitrogen removal technology. Health Department does not enforce the under-road utilities. Nothing is to be built above the leaching field. And we have a letter from Michael Ciampi, dated December two, two thousand and twenty-four, with a, a number of attachments totaling twenty pages. And I'm simply going to read the letter from Mr. Ciampi dated December two, two thousand twenty-four, to the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals. I am in a abutter of number twenty Monomoskoye West Road, which is not a part of the legal advertisement for the seventeen tiered down. This lot cannot be combined or is not contiguous ownership because it is on the other side of the road. The, this Monomoskoye West Road is twenty-five feet wide by four survey companies, and most of us have deeded rights for ingress and egress in our recorded deeds. I have proof that on seventeen's deed, it only has specifically ten foot and number twenty has none recorded. That makes it fifteen feet short of so-called owning the road. Applicant also does not have a title or deed for forty-four hundred square feet of road, doesn't pay taxes on the road, doesn't have a private septic easement to cross the road, and is not a public utility. Also can't take away our deeded rights to this road and can't block off the road to everyone else. Can't plant mitigation in it because they don't have the room anywhere else install cobblestone and use it as their driveway. They also don't have enough room for a reserve area for septic, and that's not in the hundred and fifty-foot buffer wetland zone, so they need another variance from the Board of Health on not connected number twenty. The storm last January had seawater covering the dock walkway and up to the existing foundation. So they don't need setbacks, and they need a million variances, and don't own the road, and don't have enough area on the eighteen thousand square foot of land on seventeen Monomoskoye West is on. Also, the Mashpee Tree Preservation Law is in effect, and nobody is questioning that. They need to basically clearcut an unbuildable vacant wooded lot. So far, this project has escaped justice. We would hope the Board of Appeals denies the project with prejudice because they don't own the road, don't meet any forty-foot setbacks, the garage is less than three feet back, just because the shed was plopped there on concrete blocks years ago, has seawater too close to the back of the house, and is detrimental to the neighbor, neighborhood of eleven hundred to nineteen hundred square foot house, and will not have adequate parking if they don't use the road. A lot of people have encroached on these Monomoskoye roads, and if the town issues a permit to totally take over the road, then there is something seriously wrong with the town system. Enclosed are deeds, plans, and other information pertaining to this project. Sincerely, Mike Ciampi. So there are twenty pages of various materials that Mr. Ciampi has included with this, which include deeds and the like.
I would just make reference to the fact that there are twenty pages?
And they're part of our record.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Do you have any problem with that, Counselor?
Nope.
Yep, and what we have is, we have some correspondence, you know, from the Fire Department. See if I can get this all together here. Yeah.
Yeah.
It started off with a correspondence from, from Assistant, from Acting Temporary Chief Pelletier, who went out and inspected the area, and it was related to a small wall area that was contiguous to this, to this area.
You might want to read the last letter.
And the last one is dated twelve nine, and I think takes care of it.
Yes.
And it's from J. Pelletier to Chris Corain and to Mary Ann Romero, and to, a copy to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Good afternoon, Chris. I'm very sorry for the confusion. My response about the quote-unquote "wall" was referring to an abutter who has complained numerous times to the Fire Department. The abutter stated that people are parking and driving over his property constantly to get to seventeen Monomoskoye Road West, and he asked about putting a small wall around the corner of his property to help avoid this. With that being said, Chris, I still have reservations with access to seventeen Monomoskoye Road West for emergency vehicle access. Those old paper roads can be very narrow and not maintain, maintained well. And there's a, it's correspondence from Chris Corain to Chief Pelletier and to Mary Ann and to the Board. Dear Chief Pelletier, I wanted to reach out as I am representing the owners of seventeen Monomoskoye Road West before the Zoning Board this coming Wednesday. Dearie Ann forwarded me a letter that you provided raising a concern on the wall that is concerned. There were going to be raised cobblestones along the perimeter, but they are now proposed to be grade level flush with the ground. Excuse me, if the cobblestones are the concern and continue to be a concern, we can eliminate them from the project. If you are referencing some other obstruction on the property, please advise, and I can discuss the same with the client. The engineer, Mike Borselli, is also copied on this email and can address any questions.
Any other letters?
It's a letter from Attorney Corain in response to the letter from Mr. Ciampi. And I just have to dig it out, Chris. Yeah, do you have a copy of that, Bob? Chris, do you have it?
I do, I think Mary Ann has it.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna ask you.
No, I left it at home, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, wait, looks like you're about forty pages.
Yeah. Okay. Not that long.
Not that many.
Not that many pages.
How many pages is it?
There are-
Oh, gee.
It's three pages and-
Okay, well, has to be read into the record.
Wait a minute, maybe you could just summarize it.
I think we have to read it.
I think what I'll, let me do the same thing I did relative to Mr. Ciampi's-
There's a case and a statute in there, you don't need to read into the rec-
What I'll do is I'll, I'll read, I'll read the letter, the attachments I'll leave as part of a detachment, a package. December sixth, two thousand twenty-four, to Mr. Bonvy, Chairman Bonvy. As the Board is aware, my office represents Biara and Elena St. John, applicants and owners of seventeen Monomoskoye Road West, who have filed for a special permit pursuant to section one seventy-four seventy-one and one seventy-four thirty-three to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure. I am in receipt of a letter dated December two, twenty, two thousand twenty-four from Michael Ciampi, the owner of an abutting parcel located at nine Pine Ridge Road. Please allow this letter to respond to the matters raised in Mr. Ciampi's letter. The majority of Mr. Ciampi's concerns relate to matters that are within the jurisdiction of other departments or deal with private property rights outside the purview of the zoning board. However, in an effort to be comprehensive, this letter addresses the matters Mr. Ciampi has raised, whether or not within the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Ciampi's first point concerns twenty Monomoskoye Road West. Twenty Monomoskoye Road West is a vacant lot directly on the opposite side of seventeen Monomoskoye Road West and is also owned by my clients. The only work being proposed for this lot is the installation of the septic system. There is no work being performed which would fall under the jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeals. There is no attempt to merge the lots. Mr. Ciampi next raises concerns about the ownership and use of Monomoskoye Road West. Monomoskoye Road West is a partially constructed paper road. As such, the ownership of the road is governed by Mass. General Laws one eighty-three, section fifty-eight, the so-called Derelict v. statute. Pursuant to the Derelict v. statute, an owner of property which abuts a private road owns to the center line for the length of the course that that road runs along the property line. Where there is common ownership on both sides of the road, such as here, the owners own the complete fee in the road along the course that the road runs along the property lines. The owner in the fee has all rights to repair, maintain, replace, improve the road so long as such work does not impact the rights of others to pass and repass, citing a case. Nothing proposed herein would interfere with anyone's else's rights to pass and repass. In fact, the cleared portion of Monomoskoye Road West terminates at my client's property and is impassable by vehicle any further. See GIS and photos. The area acts as nothing more than a driveway for my clients. Moreover, the, the plantings that are of concern to Mr. Ciampi are on twenty Monomoskoye Road West and outside of the raise and replace application. Ultimately, Mr. Ciampi's concerns relate to private property rights, and the zoning board is not the proper forum for the resolution. Next, Mr. Ciampi cites Mass. General Laws one eighty-seven, number five, as prohibiting my clients from installing pipes within the private road layout. Again, this concerns private property rights outside the jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeals. More importantly, however, Mr. Ciampi cites an older version of the statute, and the current version of the statute did away with the reference to public utility, and case law is clear that the components for a private septic can be installed within a private road layout, citing statute and some cases. The shed Mr. Ciampi referenced is approximately two hundred square feet in size, is a structure and predates my client's ownership. It has existed in that location for more than twenty years. It is located adjacent to an area where Monomoskoye Road West is thickly vegetated. Finally, Mr. Ciampi raises several other matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, Board of Health, or a building department. The Conservation Commission approved the project. Board of Health has indicated that no variances are required. See email from their health agent. Project is exempt from the tree bylaw due to the conservation review and irrespective. This board has, this board also conditions projects on tree preservation by law compliance. As a project seeking a special permit pursuant to one seventy-four seventeen one, the board is charged with evaluating whether a project is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. What exists currently is a non-flood zone compliant and non-building compliant home with a traditional Title V septic. The proposed home will be flood zone compliant, building code compliant, and a new IA system is proposed. Lawn area is to be reduced and replaced with native vegetation. No new non-conformities are being created. The new home will be slightly further from the resource area, and the house has been designed to impact only already disturbed areas. Further, the house was oriented and designed to minimize the impacts of the views from Mr. Ciampi's property. Overall, the project is an improvement over what exists, and Attorney Corain has attached to that a number of documents, which also will be part of the record before us.
Okay, any other letters?
No, I've already done the, the Board of Health and the, thank you. Building Commissioner comments, from Dave Morris to Mary Ann Romero with a copy to us. Hello, Mary Ann. In response to Attorney Corain's letter dated December sixth, I believe there are two zoning issues the Board needs to consider for the above project. First, I am in agreement with Acting Chief Pelletier's concern about one seventy-four thirty-two for Fire Department apparatus. Second, the lot where the proposed septic is to be placed has forty feet of frontage and thirty-eight hundred and seventy-nine square feet, which means this lot cannot be developed. Bylaw one seventy-four dash twenty-five H seven states that such a lot requires a special permit from the Board in order to build a private one or two-car garage, greenhouse, or a dock with no sanitary facilities. This could be argued to prevent the proposed septic being built. I am concerned about both these issues and urge the Board to consider whether either or both are detrimental to the neighborhood.
Anything else? Mary Ann, is that the extent?
Is a septic system considered a structure?
That's a good question. That is the question. You know...
Residential lot, isn't it?
It's in a residential zone, correct. I don't think it's a structure, your bylaw. I don't think it meets the definition of a structure. And I think when I say septic system, and I'm not the engineer, I'm not the... I believe it's only the leaching field that's going... that's proposed in that area. The septic is actually... Like, the tank of the IA is on our lot. I think this is just the reserve area in the leaching field, if I'm reading it correctly.
That is, the soil absorption system is there in the reserve area. You are correct. The tank is on the lot on the other side.
Correct, on our lot.
There is a tank in the tank. That's a system. But it's still...
It's underground.
No, no, I get it.
I don't see it as a structure. I mean, a structure under your bylaw talks about...
Well, there's three squares there. I assume there's gonna be manual covers.
Yeah, I would guess.
So there's some structure there, isn't there?
Well, not as... Not per your... Not the way we define a structure under the zone.
A structure falls under lot coverage, and that doesn't fall under lot coverage.
Right. Well, my point is, if it's a residential lot, the primary use of a residential lot is what? A residence. If that's a structure, it's gotta be a residence.
I don't... Well, again, I don't consider it a structure.
That's why I asked. Is it a structure?
Right. I see. A combination of material assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as a building, tower framework, platform, bin, sign alike. It doesn't... That doesn't fall under any of those categories.
I agree.
It's... You know, again, it... I mean, I don't really have any opposition to that. I think it's up to the health agent of whether a septic can be built there or not. But this lot is not a buildable lot, so they can't put a dwelling on that. So the zoning that does apply to it...
Okay, so you can't put a dwelling, but you could put a structure?
You could put one of these by a special permit by the board.
Could I just... The Board of Health, in the Board of Health comments of 12-6, it says, "House is five-bedroom, one on the first floor, three in the second, one above the garage area. Septic is designed for five bedrooms with nitrogen removal technology. Health department does not enforce the under-road utilities. Nothing is to be built above the leaching field." So the Board of Health calls it a leaching field...
Which means that none of these structures can be built.
Right. And nothing's proposed.
If it's put in.
We're not proposing any above-ground structure.
It's a double-edged sword. I mean, I'm...
Nothing comes out below grade. The cover has to be within a foot of grade. It doesn't have to be... It doesn't come out of the grade.
And I would also make the point is, from an environmental perspective, you want the leaching field as far away from the wetland as possible, you know? So this is a good thing, you know, for the wetland resource areas.
Yeah, but that's not the point I'm...
No, I know. I mean, my argument is not a structure. If you read the definition of structure under the bylaw, I don't think it meets it.
I see issues as twofold here. Number one is you get fire protection. So you gotta deal with that somehow. I don't know how far away the closest fire hydrant is. Remember, there's something in our zoning that says it's gotta be within so many feet.
I don't know where the fire hydrants are around there.
Yeah, so I think you got a fire protection issue here, clearly with the fire department. The acting chief says, "I got a problem with access."
Well...
That's an issue you gotta deal with.
He didn't really... I mean, I wish he had explained what his problem...
Well, all I can say is, as a board, we sit here and we have the acting fire chief saying, "I got a problem with access. I got a problem with the application," then at that point. Now, secondly, if you look at... I agree with your legal opinion of owning to the center line of the street. So if you own a lot on either side of the street, then I guess you own through the street.
Correct.
I get it. I mean, that's been around for a while.
That's a given.
That's a given. All right, so I get it. What concerns me, though, is, you know, what do you do when somebody's gonna... Let's say somebody improves the street someday, and they're putting utilities and all the rest, and all of a sudden, they don't... They have no idea that you've got a leach field on the other side of the street, and they're going right through your sewer pipe. That concerns me, but...
That's why you have DigSafe.
But that's not... They wouldn't mark that. That's a private sewer. They don't mark private sewers.
I don't know what they...
So that being said, but that's outside of our purview. I look at this leach field thing as being a Board of Health issue more than anything. And the Board of Health approved it. So I'm less concerned about the leach field issue. I'm okay with owning the center line, and I'm happy because you own both sides, so you own the center line. I'm real concerned about the fire.
What's changed about the fire access now?
Well, that's the point. We have a house there that may or may not have access, you know, that they... So we're not doing anything to make it any worse of a situation.
All that I know is, I'm not a fireman, and I've got a fire... Acting fire chief that says, "I got a problem." And that being said...
Before this proposal, it's just a crappy little paper road, is that called?
Yeah.
I don't think anything's really changing it.
I agree with you, and what the fire department is saying is, hey, if you're gonna build this house, you're gonna make these improvements, we want you to do something, whether it being improvement of Monomoskoy or something, so that we have access.
Maybe because it's going from a very small house to a really good-sized house.
I think minimumly, we've... I would recommend the following. We've gotta get the fire chief to interaction.
The access, if you looked, there's parcel 18 and parcel 19. The access goes through those parcels. Now, is that a legal... Is that a legal right-of-way or is it not? That's the question that needs to be answered.
That... I actually don't agree with that. The access is on Monomoskoy Road. It uses Monomoskoy. I think...
But it's all wooded. There's no way you can get there.
You go down Pine Ridge Road, and you take a right, and you're at the house. And that goes down with Monomoskoy is the undeveloped... The developed portion of Monomoskoy Road. I don't think that the GIS map accurately reflects where the boundary lines are. If you look at what Mike Borselli, who's the town engineer... The town engineer. The project engineer. He laid out the access as it sits on the ground with the existing and proposed, and it doesn't go over anybody else's lot, based on his engineering. The GIS looks like it does, but his engineer plan shows differently.
But minimumly, we're on record of being... Of receiving a letter of correspondence from the fire chief of this town saying he's concerned about access.
Right. Well, this project is actually improving the access. It's widening open the driveway.
He's concerned, I'm concerned.
Somehow, that document has gotta be stated... It's gotta be reversed to say, "I'm all set."
Sure.
You know how we are in reference to these issues, especially health and safety. That's fire. It's a big issue.
I did attempt to get the clarification from him about the wall, and that turned out to be something completely different.
I am far less concerned about the leach field issue. Because as far as I'm concerned, the Board of Health approved it. You own the center line on both sides. Far be it from you if you wanna put a leach field... You know, I've put leach fields on other lots down the street, not on the other side of the street, but on other lots within a subdivision. But that being said, I am very concerned about fire.
But is that his responsibility? Isn't that... The town has to come through. He's not changing the access. He's not changing the access at all. I mean, if there's a problem there, then the town has to address it and find some way to access the...
Well, not really, because we are the board that's the end of the line. We're either gonna approve or disapprove.
There is an obligation that this has to be cleared sixteen feet, 150 feet, from the further structure. We don't know if that's... It doesn't look like that sixteen feet. If the road's 20 feet wide, it looks like it's less than 10 feet. This is clear. This is clear. I can see that. It does clip the other lot. It does clip it, but I don't think it's... I don't think it's up to snuff, and that's up to the responsibility of the owners to make that 16 feet wide. They gotta clear that. Can't be going over other people's property as well. I don't see the cobblestone road. I don't understand what's going on there.
There's... No, there's a cobblestone... I... When we had... When the fire chief had first mentioned the wall issue, I thought he was talking... There's like a cobblestone edging around the driveway. I thought that's what he was talking about. It's just flood. That's a non-issue.
Yeah, no, he made a mistake.
So I've got a question. On the existing house, it looks like it's 22-9 from the road?
Yes.
And the proposed house goes from 22-9 to 11 feet, is that correct?
I think 11 is to that tank. I think. See the arrow? The end of the arrow, right there? I think it's just to the tank.
Okay, what is it to...
I don't know.
Well, I don't know. See, it kinda keeps going.
It doesn't give any mention, I think.
Well, 'cause our closest point is the three feet.
Well, yeah, I'm kinda asking you what the house is. Proposed house.
This is Borselli's.
Maybe that's the rub with the fire department.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, as I said, he didn't give a clear... He didn't give clear instructions of what exactly his problem was. I mean, if you go down Pine Ridge Road, I mean, it's a gravel road that seems to me has plenty of... Doesn't have any problematic access. You know, maybe it just takes us having the fire department... Fire chief go down there and explain what his potential concern is.
I agree with that.
As one... I can't say, you know, I vote in favor simply because that's gotta be dealt with.
Right.
I mean, it's gotta be dealt with.
Sure.
I mean, whether he does something or a fire chief, whatever, I mean, that's gotta be dealt with.
Okay.
Again, I'm, at this point in time, not concerned about the leach field, and I'm not concerned about sunline ownership of Monomoskoy. I am concerned about access to the house, but it sounds like you may have that straightened out. I don't know.
Yeah, I think so. I don't think that's an issue. I mean, again, we've run... This is the second time we've kinda run into this access issue with already existing houses. I mean, there's... These houses were granted building permits at some time without having the fire department complain about the improvement to the road, and now we're kind of trying to turn back the clock on these things.
Nah, but you...
Well, you're putting a new house.
You're asking for something from this board, which is a special permit, right? You know, my opinion of special permits in reference to raise and replace?
I know.
We vary in your... In our discussion about that, but my attitude is, is we're the end of the road here, and you got a fire chief saying, "I got an issue. Fix the issue."
All right. Well, I think then I don't wanna belabor the meeting tonight, 'cause obviously the board is gonna want us to have a discussion with the fire department to see if we can resolve whatever...
I think that's all we need. We wanna know what his problem is. And I, you know, I agree with Mike. If this has been the way it has been for as long as it's been, why now?
Right.
You know, it doesn't...
Because things are changing, I guess.
Well, you're not changing...
They're putting a brand-new house.
But you're not changing the road.
The access job...
The access hasn't changed.
I don't know the answer to it.
Yeah, but in our zoning, there is... And there is fire protection. There's a certain width and a certain distance, et cetera. And he may not meet that.
From just even looking at a map, it does not meet this.
It doesn't meet the minimum of our zoning. So this house could... That's here, could have been built before that zoning, okay? And it's pre...
It's grandfathered.
You could say it's pre-existing non-conforming because of that.
And a raise and replace for all of that.
With its health and safety, and you got a fire department sitting in the sand, which kinda trumps it.
Right.
Yeah, so it says it needs to have an all-weather surface that supports fire apparatus for a width of 12 feet and a cleared width of 16 feet. And that's obviously not wide enough, 'cause that strip is really is a right-of-way that is supposed to be maintained, and it was never maintained, and whether it's there forever is not the intention by the owners, by the owners of the...
It's a private road. But there's gotta be an all-weather surface. There is now, so I don't think that that's the concern.
I don't think it's 12 feet wide.
I would imagine you can manage through it. It's just you've got...
I think it can be improved. I do think it can be improved, and then we have to go from... We have to establish how far it has to be from the furthest point of the garage to 150 feet to that point, and then we can... That'll conform to that bylaw.
In many ways, yes. So does the board see anything else that they're concerned about?
I just think we need to hear from Chief Pelletier. That's all.
What I'm gonna do is go to the audience, et cetera, but I just wanna make sure that if...
Yeah, if there's anything else, I wanna be able to address it for the next night.
I'm fine with everything, just to hear from you.
I'm okay. I mean, unless something comes up about this leach field issue, I don't see it. Board Health approved it. I don't have a problem with it. So that's where I'm at. So why don't we... If that's okay, why don't I go to the audience? 'Cause I'd like to hear from the audience in case there are any other issues. Anybody in the audience having to say about the application? Yes, sir?
Three minutes.
Yeah. Well, I'll see if I can cut them short.
It's 8:30.
Hi, my name is Mike Chiapi, Nine Pine Ridge Road. I'm an abutter on two sides to this project. When I bought my property 32 years ago, I was abutting Monomoskoy West Road, and if approved, I'll be abutting a front yard. Is the assessing department gonna grant the applicant free land, which myself and many others have deeded rights to? Second, I abut 20 Monomoskoy West, which assesses card states non-buildable wooded lot. If approved, it would be clear-cut, 35 by 100, into a barren wasteland covered by mulch with a sewer vent almost in my backyard. This forced main, not gravity, leach field does not even meet Title V reserve area of 150 feet from a wetland buffer zone or the Mashpee Tree Preservation Law. I measured from high tide to the road, and number 17 only has 72 feet of upland, which means it only leaves 17 feet of land for current zoning. Also, the footings will be in salt water. It also got... Was denied by Conservation on the first try of notice of intent. The house needs a dozen variances. When does the town draw the line? They need the road, which they don't own, because they don't have enough room on the lot for mitigation plantings, cross the road to a non-contiguous lot for a septic. They have no deed or title or easement for the road and can't block the road off to me, Frank Roberts' family, the Town of Mashpee lot, that abuts it or anyone else who has deeded rights for ingress and egress. I have proved in my 20-page document that I submitted December 2, that 20 Monomoskoy West has no deeded rights to this road. I have been fighting this ridiculous project since 2016. Let's face it, if you don't have enough land for a five-bedroom, then you just don't have enough land. So let's finally lay this project to rest with a denial with prejudice vote, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. We'll take your input into consideration.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? Name and location and your involvement, please.
Dear St. John, resident owner of Seventeen Monomoskoy Road West. Couple of things to point out. We did reach out to emergency services, Mike Borselli. In fact, in the landscape plan, you'll see an ambulance drawn in, and whether or not I talked to the fire chief... chief, he's not here, unfortunately, to, to speak to that, but they did reach out to emergency services.
There was a transition in fire chiefs over the last week, so you got caught in the middle.
Fair enough. And certainly, you know, I'm not sure it's a, you know, intended consequence or intended consequence of, of sort of pushing back on this project, but if, if we have to cut those trees to widen the road, you know, I, I guess want to understand what, what other jurisdictions come to play, Conservation Commission, you know, if that's what the board's looking for and neighbors looking for, you know, widening the road of, right of way.
I think at this point, what the board's looking for is we are, we have been notified by the acting chief of this town-
Sure.
-that he's concerned about access.
Okay.
And whatever it may be. So, we've gotta be, we have to have a document that says, "I'm all set."
Understood.
And, and whatever you need to accomplish that task is between you and him.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
And you may have to go back to Conservation. You may have to do a lot of things in order to accomplish that. I don't know.
Sure, okay. I do want to point out, we did reach out to Mr. Champy about a year ago with our plans and, and for this, this property. You know, unfortunately, the first time we're hearing any feedback is this form, which is disappointing, trying to be good neighbors here. We reached out to, you know, all the neighbors with our ideas and plans, took input. We did keep the, the house as far north as possible to not obstruct his views. It could have been certainly a lot easier for us to put a house closer to the southern, southern boundary and give ourselves some privacy on the other side, but again, we, we took into consideration, you know, the neighbors here and, and the impact it has. So, I'd like to think, you know, the improvements to the environment, the, moving the septic from within 50 feet of the wetland resource to 150 feet. The engineers did, did factor in the, the reserve area. In fact, the original design was in the reserve area that's there now. So, I think we, we met all those, those obligations. I just wanted to, you know, bring a few of these points forward.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else in the audience? Mr., Mr. Champy, if, if it's anything new, please. Nothing, just...
No, I think we can resolve the fire department.
Say again?
I think we can resolve the fire department.
No, we can't resolve it. The fire department has resolved it.
I asked the fire department.
No, 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 no. Let, let the, let me just say this. The owner has a right to go back to the fire department and work through, if possible, his issues with the fire department. You, you can't help with that. You're not the fire department.
Everyone's encroaching on my property as they turn the corner.
You have a civil right, if, in fact, someone ever approaches, approaches on your property, you can go to court and defend that property. I, you know, we don't give anybody land rights. We never have, we can't. All we're here to do is listen to an application, deny or approve it. Right now, we have a fire chief that's questioning access. We have said to the applicant, "Go deal with the fire chief." And whatever way he needs to do that, and she needs to do that, that's up to them. Whether they accomplish that or not, I don't know. They may not be able to. If they can't, we need to deal with that as a board. But as far as getting input from you as a fire chief, that would mean nothing to us as a board.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. So, councillor, how would you like to handle this?
Um, two ways. Well, one is, I just want to respond a little bit to, you know, this, we need a million variances. It's just not true. You've got the letter for the board. I, if you don't need me to get into it, I'm not gonna get into it. I just want to...
I don't think at this point in time to get into it would make sense.
It's worth it.
At this point in time, the zoning enforcement officer has, I presume you've met with him, and he's told you what you need.
Yes, that is correct.
He's a zoning enforcement officer. He's the boss.
Right. And the Board of Health has approved it, Conservation has approved it.
That's not our hunt.
Correct. So, at this point, I think what I'm hearing from the board is that, you know, we need to sit down with the fire chief or meet with him on site, get a sense of exactly what his concern about access is, come back to this board hopefully with a positive recommendation from him.
It's a paper from him retracting his concerns.
Sure. So, in that sense-
Send to us.
I would, right, I would ask for a continuance to January 8th.
January 8th, okay, Mary. Can I get a motion to approve the applicant's request to extend this hearing till the January 8th?
Yep.
If I have a second. All's in favor.
Great. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
You don't need me on my phone.
Okay, so, sitting on the next.
Where's Bill?
Billy?
Come on, Bill. Come on down.
All right, so, the next will be?
Chris.
One regular, the five, four reg, are you, are you staying?
You want it to take?
I guess so.
Well, it's up to you, because I've got enough.
No, I roll. It's all right.
You're all set?
Yep.
All right, so, what did we just do? Who just was on that? You two?
I think, I think I was.
Continuation.
Why don't we do this?
I think I was.
Four regular members and Mike. How's that? To sit on this one. How's that?
Sounds good.
Okay. One second.
All right.
One second, guys. Hold on up.
That looks like the background. Uh, let's see.
We vacation.
Yeah, I guess. I don't think anybody's here.
You made that. Trash that.
You supposed to sign this?
I guess so.
Very Christmas, George.
Who's that, Charlie? Who's that? Who, who sat on that one? I'm sorry. I forgot.
I did.
So, you did see, sit on it?
I have signatures here.
Sign it anyway.
Yeah.
Sign it anyway.
Make it unanimous.
I'll sign it too.
Just don't have Mike sign it. It'll mess it all up. All right, so, sitting on this one for clarity, four regular members and Mike.
One I did sign. I signed one earlier.
All right, four regular members and Mike, here we go. Charlie, would you read 68 Mercantile Way into the record, please?
I would be delighted. The last new matter on our list for today is 68 Mercantile Way petitioner, oops, I'm sorry, 68 Mercantile Way petitioner Eric B. Clapper, 10 Sugarpine Circle Mashpee, Mass. Is appealing the building commissioner's decision under Mash General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 8 and 15, to issue a certificate of occupancy based on Condition Number 6 of the Zoning Board of Appeals' decision SP 2002229 on property located in the I-1 and Light Industrial Districts, MAP 88 Parcel 91 Mashpee, Mass.
Does everyone know what Condition 6 is?
No.
You want me to read it? All right, why don't you send around Condition 6, please?
I have to.
All right. So, right. Condition number 6. So, where is it?
So, why don't we read it?
So, where is it, Mary Ann, specifically? All right, I've got it. All right, I'll read it to you.
Yeah.
Condition number 6. Number 6. Condition that the applicant install white pine trees eight foot apart, eight foot tall, along the north border within the 10-foot zone.
I remember that.
Period. So, that's the basis of the appeal.
I remember that.
Uh, Ms. Clapper, would you like to present, please?
Hmm.
Or Mr. and Mrs. Clapper, I apologize.
Good evening. My name is Eric Clapper. I live at 10 Sugarpine Circle Mashpee. I'm before you to appeal the building commissioner's decision to issue an occupancy permit to the abutting commercial property located at 68 Mercantile Way on the grounds that the commissioner did not enforce the language of Condition Number 6 of the special permit issued on July 27th, 2022, even though we brought this non-compliance to his attention prior to him issuing the occupancy permit. The developer chose not to follow the specific language of the condition, and the building commissioner approved these changes. The building commissioner does not have the authority to approve changes to the special permit or any of its conditions. Condition Number 6 reads, quote, "Condition that the applicant install white pine trees eight feet apart, eight feet tall, along the north border within the 10-foot zone. The trees currently planted are spaced greater than eight feet apart, some trees spaced as great as 22 feet apart. Also, 60-plus feet of the north border was left unplanted, creating an unobstructed view of a 60-yard dumpster and parking lot. When we met at public hearing on July 27th, 2022, we presented our concerns about the impact of this commercial development on its residential neighbors. After much discussion, it was agreed that a condition of the special permit providing a buffer planting zone needed to be created. This, this condition became a part of the special permit, is filed with the Registry of Deeds, and is legally binding. If there were to be any changes to the special permit or any of its condition, it is the responsibility of the developer to present these changes before the board. Through public hearing, and the changes must be agreed upon by the board as well as the abutters. This was never done, though there were several changes to the proposed plan, which are now negatively impacting our property. As a result, I'm forced to come to you at my expense to explain a discrepancy that is not my responsibility to do. When the trees were planted, we immediately reached out to the developer with our concerns, but got no response. We then contacted the building commissioner to advise him that the plantings were done incorrectly and incompletely. His action was to disregard the terms of the special permit and issue the occupancy permit stating that he felt the job was done professionally. Mr. Commissioner, a job is never done professionally if it's done incorrectly. It's the responsibility of the zoning board and its representatives to always consider the impact of developments on their abutters, especially residential properties. At no time should a developer be given the impression that they are not obligated to do anything, especially after conditions of a special permit are agreed upon. Because the developer did not plant trees to the, to the written specifications of the special permit condition, we are forced to endure continued noise, air, and light pollution from this development. This has created a negative impact on our property values and severely affects our quality of life. We now look at a 60-yard dumpster, which was not on the proposed plan, unshielded lighting, which shines onto our property all night long. Please note that no lighting plan was ever submitted as part of the special permit. That is cause for denial right there. But it was, it was still approved. We have truck headlights, which project directly into our windows, backup alarms, and the noise of refuse being thrown into said dumpster, which can be heard as early as 6:30 a.m. outside of the zoning laws, and can happen anytime throughout the day. These conditions should have been recognized by this board, and greater mitigation plans should have been determined during the 2022 hearing that would have immediately protected us from the negative impacts of this project. However, through due process, we compromised as homeowners, and all parties agreed on the language of Condition Number 6 of the special permit. After two years of patiently and anxiously watching our backyard deforested and the construction of a 9,700-square-foot steel building and parking lot with all the noise and the dust that comes along with it, we were excited to finally have trees that would help to buffer against the day-to-day commercial operations that exist. Instead, because the trees are planted further apart than what was required by the special permit, it will take many additional years of growth, years of growth, gentlemen and ma'am, to screen against these negative impacts. The part of the north border of their property that was left unplanted will never provide relief. No trees were ever planted, so there's no way that it can mitigate anything going on on that commercial property. This is unfair. There are many deficiencies with this project. A peer review should have been conducted and results posted. An updated landscaping plan should have been requested. A lighting plan should have been submitted per special permit regulations, and an updated site plan with proposed changes should have been brought to hearing. It is time for the Zoning Board of Appeals to do the right thing, to enforce the conditions of the special permit and to protect the citizens of this community whom they are committed to serve. I'm asking the Zoning Board to uphold the language of the special permit and enforce any applicable zoning laws pertaining to this project, and to honor what was agreed upon and what became a legal part of the special permit. Proof of my grievance is self-evident. Voting against this appeal would be voting against your own regulations. I request that you appeal the building commissioner's decision to provide 68 Mercantile Way with an occupancy permit without enforcement of the language of Condition Number 6 of the special permit, which was issued on July 27th, 2022, and to require the homeowner slash developer of aforementioned property to plant trees a maximum distance of eight feet apart along the entire north border within the 10-foot buffer zone until reaching the natural, undisturbed wooded area along the east border. So, that basically means the entire north border of their property. Standing dead trees at the property line resulting from the excavation and development of their property should also be removed and new trees planted. Furthermore, the developer slash petitioner should be made to comply with all lighting requirements as specified in the Mashpee special permit regulations. Thank you.
Okay. If I can just say one thing. So, we need to stay focused on what the appeal is, which is Number 6.
Yeah, I'd, I'd also like to look at the approved plan.
Yes, I was gonna say the same.
And I also have comments to make, so you tell me when that would be appropriate.
So, I think, yeah, why don't you sign in now?
Great, thanks. Uh, thank you all for being here and staying here tonight. I'm Gene Clapper, 10 Sugarpine Circle Mashpee, direct to butter to 68 Mercantile Way. I've owned this property jointly with my husband since 2009 for our personal use only. We are both retired. We live here full-time, year-round. As a residential homeowner, abutting 68 Mercantile Way, it makes no sense to me that we as Mashpee residents have the burden to file and appeal the building permit or occupancy permit being issued by Mr. Morris, the building commissioner. This despite a written agreement, Condition Number 6, which he was informed prior to issuing the occupancy permit. We gave him a call and said, "Hey, just a heads up, this isn't in compliance, and, you know, we're, we're hoping everybody would work with us to help mitigate this issue." That didn't happen. So, he was informed that prior to issuing it, it was not and is not in compliance. Additionally, as Mashpee residents, again, private homeowners, we were required to pay the commercial rate of approximately $350 to file this as an appeal rather than what it is, non-compliance to a legal agreed-upon condition as the zoning enforcement officer. That's what I heard you say a short time ago. Frustrating. As, again, as an appeal by us to this commercial project, which the zoning board heard and the building commissioner ultimately granted, which does not meet the conditions. We reached out, we spoke to you, Mr. Morris, prior to it being issued. We again informed you, it was not met. You gave it anyway. According to the Mashpee website, which states in part, quote, "The mission of the Zoning Board of Appeals is to hold a public hearing to address requests for relief." We came in good faith. We attended the ZBA on 7/27/22 and worked together in good faith to come to an agreement, which includes Condition Number 6, which states, again, "The applicant install white pine trees eight feet apart, eight feet tall, along the north border," you've heard it. Condition Number 6 is not met, remains in non-compliance. Mr. Hostetter, the property owner, responded to an email on 11/13. Again, we've been dealing with this for two and a half years. Finally responded to my husband, reiterating that, quote, "He's not required to do anything," and that we, the homeowners, could plant trees on our property to screen. We're gonna have to do that anyway, this eight-foot apart, and look at this. This isn't a buffer anyway, but we conceded and agreed at this hearing on that eight-foot apart, eight-foot trees, and we said, "Then we'll do what we need to do to try and make this property livable." As homeowners who have all, who have all, he also told us, "Maybe you shouldn't have bought next to a residential or commercial property." As homeowners who have also previously owned residential property, abutting a commercial property in Milbury, where the buffer zone was adequate, we had no issues, no complaints, and the commercial owner even went so far as to provide Thanksgiving turkeys each year to all the abutters. We're not looking for anything other than what was agreed upon in Condition Number 6, in writing, and as such is now legally required to be done. The commercial property did not meet this condition, and it seems as if the building commissioner looked the other way. As he, Mr. Morris, you were yet to respond to me when I asked, "How can you explain about eight-foot apart trees can be approved for 20-foot plus apart?" And I, and you offered me no response when I asked how the required plantings could stop at a random point along the border. If you go and get a haircut, and they only cut half your head, you gonna say that's great? No, it's not, it's not professional. It's not done properly. I'll continue. Uh, this, sorry. Thereby having, okay, so now, again, because it stopped at the 60-yard dumpster, which wasn't on the plan, not shown on the plan, we have full sight of that from my kitchen window, from my backyard, my patio, a 60-yard dumpster, commercial trucks and parking areas, in addition to these obtrusive lights that are operating throughout the night, throughout the night. Why? We approached the, again, we reached out to Mr. Hostetter about the lights, and he informed us that as he is selling these units off, each owner will have their own ideas about their condos, he called them, and needed security, so we'd have to deal with them each individually. That will further challenge our ability to have this property be a good neighbor to us, residential abutters. What has occurred here is obviously detrimental, that was a word you used, Mr. Bondi, it's obviously detrimental to our property and quality of life, and I wonder, whose interest does the town protect? At this point, it certainly doesn't seem like it's us, the homeowners, that we had to bring this to an appeal for non-compliance. I appreciate your time, and I thank you all for your consideration, but I'd love to understand.
Question. Is there a fence around the dumpster?
No.
No.
There was a fence on the proposed plan for a 15-yard dumpster, which has since been removed from the property.
You need to stop.
Next to, let me answer the question, please, sir.
No, I'm gonna stop, 'cause I'm the chairman of this board. This appeal is based on trees Number 6 only. I don't know anything about a dumpster. I don't care about a dumpster.
Why? It wasn't on the original plan.
These issues are all-
Nothing to do with this appeal.
So, I have to file again for $350? So I have to file again for $350?
Well, this is an addition, this is addition to it, sir.
You getting all this?
There's an addition. Mr. Bondi, I have a question for you. When we met the other day on the property, to review...
First of all, I say the following. We listened to your input. I need to say the following. I was asked by the town manager of this town to go out and do an inspection with the zoning enforcement officer of this town. I did that. I went out to your property.
You went to the abutters property, not our property.
The abutters property. I was asked to look at the trees for compliance of number six.
Okay.
So I was asked to do, I did that. I took pictures. They're in my phone.
Okay.
I'm of the opinion of the following. There was, there are cer- certainly trees that are further than eight feet apart.
I can give you the exact distances if you would like and if the board would like, if any member of the board would like.
I did not measure them. In many cases, they were more than eight feet apart because there's some existing trees there.
Negative. That is not true. This is a newly developed buffer zone. There are no existing trees that were there.
Show us the pictures and show the public those pictures.
So you're, you're not, you're not stating facts, sir. All right? I have, I can tell you...
I'm telling you what I saw.
I know what you saw.
Now, when we were out there, we had a conversation.
Yes.
I said to you, I felt that it is in compliance of the plan. Okay?
Did you also state that if all these trees were cut down, you would still approve it?
Yes, you did.
No, I did not.
Sir, sir, you are perjuring yourself.
If you were there, the standing tree were cut down, I would approve it.
Mr. Morris, Mr. Morris was really more concerned about trespassing on the property than, than having any kind of an intelligent discussion about this.
The trees, in my opinion, were planted...
Eight feet apart?
Per the plan, per the zoning enforcement officer's decision to approve or disapprove.
I understand that, but it does not have anything, it does not meet the conditions of the special permit.
This board, let me, let me say what I need to say. This board approves or disapproves applications. We approve or disapprove variances, site, uh, special permits, findings, et cetera. The person who makes the decision whether that permit is in compliance is that gentleman right there.
So we would...
Now, I was asked, I didn't wanna go out because I have, technically, it is not my job, not even my authority, to make sure that a plan is followed and not followed. That's his job. I did go out, though, because I was asked to do so. Very rarely am I asked, but I was asked. And I went out and looked, okay? It is my opinion that this plan right here, and if you'd like to come up and take a look at it...
Is this the proposed plan? You don't have, you just tell me, is that the proposed?
It's the one that's signed.
The one that's signed?
This is a little document.
That's the proposed plan?
The plan that I took with me to that site in my car, your site is in substantial compliance of this plan.
So that is, does, has nothing to do with the meeting on 7/27/22?
Would you like to take a picture of this?
I asked you a question, I'd like that answered first, please.
What's your question again?
Is, was that part of the, uh, meeting that we all attended on 7/27/22?
I don't know the day, is that the day I was at the site?
Can you look at the plan and see what the dates?
This is what I brought with me to the site.
I, I understand that, Mr. Bondi, but, but when that plan was proposed at the special permit meeting, additional condition, landscape conditions were created.
That's the signed plan.
What's the date of this plan, sir?
The zoning board felt that they didn't need an updated plan, that the writing of the condition was appropriate. There's no real need, and I certainly wouldn't have pushed that issue because I know what eight feet is. I have a tape measure. I expected what was the part, what, I expected the exact plantings according to the condition that was agreed upon by all parties. That condition exists. That condition exists at the registry of deeds as an official document. You need to uphold the conditions of a special permit. I can't see this board moving in any other direction other than that. That's the whole idea behind the whole process. If there are conditions that need to be done, and I've been hearing it all night long about other projects that are being presented to you.
Why don't we give the zoning enforcement officer at this point?
Thank you.
Well, um, I did put my decision in writing. I don't, I don't see...
Do we have it? Why don't we read it in?
Um, but this, the basis of the appeal, do we have the ASBIL? We can compare it to that?
That's, that's what this is, right?
That's, that's, that's the proposal, we have an ASBIL.
Does the ASBIL have the trees on it?
Is the approved plan?
It has every tree, every single tree.
Yes, it does. And it also shows them in non-compliance, because if you look at the scale and the amount of trees planted and where it is adjacent to our property lines, it does not comply.
This is the ASBIL. So I just, here's what I want to show you. That's the ASBIL.
There are trees, there are trees...
One, one person talking, please.
There are trees on the nor, on the north side. This does not say go entirely or go to stop to any point of the, you know, which...
Why are you so in favor of a developer against the residents of this town?
Because it is in compliance.
It's not in compliance, sir. It's they're not eight feet apart.
Some of them are eight feet apart.
None of them are eight feet apart, sir. Would you like the measurements?
It's along the north border. It doesn't say you have to go within the 10...
Why are you in favor of the developer on this? You're supposed to protect us as residents. What's going on here, guys?
Both sides have...
All right, everybody can't be talking at the same time.
Both sides have my protection.
Let's get some control on this one.
They have a right to build, they have a right to build, and then, a, a building there, it was given by the board, so they have a right to build.
Here's what I wanna do is, let the, let the zoning enforcement officer speak and then you're gonna be able to rebut. Go ahead, David, please.
We didn't hear what you just said, 'cause you were being spoken over, if you could, please. Thank you, sorry.
I was saying, both sides, uh, do have my protection. They have a right to build, you have the right for your protection. Um, I think it's a little misleading saying that you, you know, you are in a butter, I get, but there is, your director butter is the town of Mashpee and you have a 75-foot buffer zone built in, which a lot of people on the, on the, uh, on the industrial zone do not have. Um, again...
To moot point, sir.
Again, if you look, if you compared the ASBIL to, um, to the proposed, the job, which I said is very professionally done, is, is a correct statement and, um, I'll leave it at that.
All right, I'd like to show you, if I may, the ASBIL to this board.
I have a copy of the ASBIL, sir.
So you, and that's this right here?
Yes, it is.
It says in the bottom right, ASBIL.
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the approved plan?
The one that was signed off?
Yes, the proposed plan, I do, yes, sir.
This is the approved signed plan.
Yes.
This would be the plan that you make reference to. And this is the ASBIL.
That plan would be referred to without changes. If there are any changes to that plan, they should have been presented to the board and it should have been brought to open hearings so that we would have been able to discuss those changes, such as distances...
The reason for me saying what I'm saying is, I will right now count the trees on the approved plan, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13...
I have 15...
On the approved plan. And here's the amount of trees on the ASBIL plan. And ASBIL plan is what actually is out in the field. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23.
Yes.
That's the ASBIL plan.
Now, those, out of those trees, only 15 of them are the north border. You're looking at trees also that abut another commercial property.
So 15 of them...
Correct? Is that correct?
The 15 of them cover the whole north border of the property.
They do not cover the whole bo, north border. If you were to look again, you would notice. And I wrote, I, I submitted as part of my appeal and a plan that shows the deficiencies.
The key is, what was approved and what was built?
Eight-foot trees, eight-foot apart along the north border.
Excuse me for a second.
Right? Oh, I'm sorry, that was a question, I thought.
Excuse me. David, is that correct? What was approved and what was actually built?
Yeah, I mean, again, you look at that and you can say that it was unprofessionally done. It would be tough to argue.
It is not in compliance. The distances are not accurate. They were planted incorrectly. Would you like the tree distances? I have them here in front of me.
I like them.
There are 15 trees planted along the north border. Between 1 and 2, it's 9 feet. Between 2 and 3, 10 feet. Between 3 and 4, 11 feet. Between 4 and 5, 15 feet. Between 5 and 6, 12 feet. Between 6 and 7, 12 feet. Between 7 and 8, 22 feet. No, sir. Between 8 and 9, 19 feet. And the 19-foot spacing is to accommodate for a rowhead, which is within the 10-foot buffer zone. That's against Mass general laws. But that's not on the proposed plan either. 9 to 10, 11 feet. 10 to 11, 12 feet. 11 to 12, 11 feet. 12 to 13, 12 feet. 13 to 14, 11 feet. 14 to 15, 12 feet, which leaves approximately 60 feet of unprotected north border.
Which has the dumpster in it that was not on the plan, with no fence. And that's what we look directly at and hear.
It's not that it's unprotected either, that's not...
It is unprotected, sir. I, I have a clear view of it every day.
Is the lot cleared from the last tree on the north border that's planted, all the way over, all the way over to the lot's border?
Where the east, there's an undisturbed east border, which buffers the paper road, great hay, I believe it is.
Right.
Uh, so the north border continues until it meets the east border.
You expect there to be plantings in that area?
Absolutely. It's to buffer the parking area. Absolutely.
No, 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 we're, we're disconnecting.
No, he's talking before that. No, not after the thing, but...
I'm talking in the area, let's say, of the dumpster, somewhere in the area of the dumpster, somewhere between the dumpster, okay, and the other lot corner, okay? You, there were trees where it didn't need to be cleared.
Correct.
Did you expect there to be trees planted in that area, in that 10-foot set back?
Anyplace that was cleared.
Up to, where they didn't disturb it.
Right.
We're fine with that, obviously, but they stopped and that's what I asked, Mr. Morris.
This plan depicts that that area that we're discussing is in the area of the dumpster. Is that correct?
That is all unprotected, no trees are there, no planted trees.
Do you have, do you have the, uh, diagram that I submitted to you as part of the application?
I'm sure we do. Do you have the appeal application?
Yeah, no, the last tree is at the beginning of the 60-yard dumpster is where the last tree that they planted, even though all the ones prior to that aren't in the eight-foot apart, you know, and then the dumpster got dropped off. I have a video of them, you know, doing that at, what, 6:30 in the morning.
I can't believe we're here discussing this. Eight feet is eight feet, guys. It's not planted eight feet apart. They're planted further away and it's gonna take years to buffer this commercial property against its residents. I thought you guys were gonna step up for us.
Maybe, maybe. Let's just maybe.
Okay. How does the board wanna handle this?
What are we looking for, more trees?
I'm looking for the trees to be planted at a max, a maximum of eight feet apart along the... I read it. I'll read it again.
Right. Nothing more than what was agreed upon.
No, no, yeah, you don't have to read it again.
All right, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Thank you.
It's very simple. The plan's supposed to be eight feet apart. You're telling us it's not eight feet apart, you're telling me they are eight feet apart.
No.
No.
He's not telling, he says he likes how they look and doesn't care about the distance between the trees.
It was a professional job.
Well, that's where I have a problem.
There are, I just tried to use my phone so I could show you. On the area of the westerly side here, which is not what he's contending, but I, it's what I took a picture of, I could have also taken a picture of the northerly side, there are some trees that I, I didn't use a tape measure, but you can clearly see they're not eight feet. Why? In this case that I'm, that I took a picture of, not all cases, there's a, there's an existing tree in the middle. You don't wanna cut down an existing tree to, to put a tree.
But you put it four feet to that side and four feet to that side.
But that's, that's the, that's the west border, as you just stated, and, and we're not concerned about the west border.
If the plantings are more than eight feet apart, is there a tree between them?
No.
No, 'cause they cleared that area.
So there's no trees there.
And it, there was like a little berm.
They should be eight feet apart. According to what we approved, they should be eight feet apart.
Go look at it.
I, deal is a deal.
Thank you.
A deal is a deal.
Zoning enforcement officer.
A deal is a deal.
Don't be rude.
I'm not, but that's what I heard from him.
If you keep repeating that, it's not...
I'm sorry, it's what I'm learning.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes.
It's right from the beginning, whose attitude is that you should control. I understand your frustration.
I, I'm very upset about this because...
I, listen, and to help you.
Yes.
But you, you don't know what got us to this point, sir. I'm sorry. And I apologize if I offend anybody for my attitude, but I have justification for it.
We, we can hear you.
Okay.
If, if you can just tone it down, we can come to some kind of an agreement, I'm sure. I mean, I don't know.
But what we don't understand is why we had to, why we had to enforce it.
If you're done with your presentation, I'd like to go to the audience and see if there's anyone in the audience that'd like to speak up. Do you have something to say, sir?
You can stay right there, 'cause I'm sure...
Why don't you say who you are...
You need, you need the microphone.
Grab a microphone.
Yeah.
No, you gotta speak...
No, you gotta ease it.
Go on TV.
You gotta give your...
Yeah, Dave, yeah, follow that.
Hmm. Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction. I'm also a Mashpee resident, if that matters. Um, may I turn and address them?
You should address the board, really.
The board.
Trust the board.
So, the first thing, when I first heard about this, I happened to be on vacation the day that Mr. Clapper came to the job site, the day after the trees were planted. Maybe it was that day they finished, I'm not exactly sure. I watched the video from 7/27/22, and if that hasn't been done by the board, that needs to be pulled up and watched.
I did.
Good, because what you said in there is, please recall, you don't have to do any of this. But we're agreeing to do it. And it was at quite an expense to the owner. Um, they are not planted at eight feet on center. I laid them out at 10 feet on center, because the agreement was, we love what you did at Franny, it looks great, do what you did there. So I went and measured the trees that are there, they're 10 to 12 feet on center. I laid them out at 10 feet. Done.
If I can interject, you wanna look at April, uh, ju, no, July 27...
July 27, 22.
22 and start at 49.37 minutes. And you will see exactly what he said. I was just waiting for this, because it is my opinion that the intent of the presentation has been followed. Period. Everybody's been yelling, screaming and all the rest, but look at 49.37 seconds. You will see it. look at forty-nine point three-seven seconds. You will see it. It's very clear. And as a matter of fact, I'm speaking now. As a matter of fact, you two were not the two that were being very concerned about the plantings. It was Mr. Boydin.
Who has since passed.
Well, I don't...I'm not saying that. All that I'm saying to you is, it wasn't an issue for you as much as Mr. Boydin. Mr. Boyd...well, listen, everybody, forty-nine point three-seven seconds. She's saying it's not true. Listen to it. It's on the town website. Mr. Boydin was very concerned about tree planting. It went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and the other site was questioned.
And we weren't there at the moment to know exactly what spacing they were at. So when it was time to plant the trees, we went and measured exactly what was there. And lo and behold, there's actually still a tag on one of the trees from when they were planted originally that shows they came from the same nursery that we got these from. So when was that done? Franny Labs, fifteen years ago? Fifteen years? They should have the same buffer.
I entice everybody in this board to look at, again, was it July twenty-seventh?
I'm confused. Was it approved at eight feet or was it just a suggestion?
It was a suggestion.
Can I rebut? Mr. Brooks, can I rebut what his statements were?
Certainly.
I appreciate it.
Eric Clapperton, Sugar Pine Circle.
Conversations were had that day at the special permit. We all know what was said. And we all discussed back and forth what we thought might be the best way to approach this. We came to a condition. It was written. It was filed with the Registry of Deeds. That's what we expected when we walked away from the planning board meeting, the zoning board meeting, that that's what we were going to get. Now, two years later, you're telling us, no, we don't have to get that because the developer thinks that he doesn't have to do anything? That's not in the zoning bylaws. It's not the purpose of this board. The board is supposed to recognize and help to mitigate against these projects.
Okay, thank you very much. What would the board like to do?
I'd like to just know, is it a suggestion or is it written?
Yeah, I need some clarification on that.
You may...
It's a written condition, and it's filed with the Registry of Deeds. It is a written condition as part of the special permit and was filed with the Registry of Deeds.
Dave, is that how it's written or is it not? Is it a suggestion that they would do what they can?
It says, "Conditioned to the applicant install white pine trees eight feet apart, eight feet tall, along the north border within the ten-foot zone." So it doesn't say how many trees, how many...
Doesn't say where to start, stop.
Along the north border.
That would mean the entire north border.
So there's part of the north border that's even cleared.
It's what?
There's part of the north border that's never been cleared. It's still natural. Do you cut the trees and put them?
Do you want to cut trees along the damn north border? The whole length of the north border, eight feet apart.
So you're going to go cut trees to plant trees?
No, no. You plant them in the developed...
You're saying you can't have your cake and eat it too. You're saying the north border needs trees. All the north border.
Yes. And you can intelligently...
You've got to cut trees to plant trees.
No. No, you don't. What you do need to do is plant trees in the area that was developed.
That was disturbed and torn down.
But what Mike just said is you've got to plant trees in the whole north border. There's a lot of the north border.
Well, if that's what they have to do and if they have to plant in the undisturbed area, so be it. That's not what we're looking for. All we're looking for is a mitigation against this project based on the conditions that were set forth.
What the board want to do? What's the recommendation? Right now, we've got...so sitting on this is four regular members and Mike.
Before I can vote, I just need some clarity. If we conditioned that the trees have to be eight feet apart, and I'm being told that the trees are not...
There's a condition. That's the actual condition.
White pine trees, eight feet apart.
Right.
Okay. That's my clarity. I got my clarity.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Okay.
Well, what's the motion?
What's the motion?
So I guess we make the motion to...
Get it in the affirmative.
We're going to do it in the pause.
In the pause.
Can I make one additional comment, guys? And I mean this sincerely. We're not looking to pull an occupancy permit from my neighbors. They're conducting business. They're fairly reasonable about it. That's not our intention is to shut down their operation. We know that we abut a commercial property. All we're asking for is what we sat down and agreed upon on the twenty...
Seventeenth.
Twenty-seventh of July in two thousand twenty-two. Since that time, I do have to say that there were certain things that were overlooked as part of the special permit application. The developer and builder was supposed to submit a lighting plan. That's in the regulations.
That's not part of the appeal.
All right. Okay. Well, we'll put it under new business then as soon as we're done. Is that fine? Can we do that?
I'll tell you, it's not part of this appeal. So I'd like to have a motion. Motion should state something to the effect...
Charlie. Charlie, everybody. Let's just figure out the type of motion that we're voting on, what it means. As I understand it, the issue that you have is that you're appealing...
No, no. You've got a motion there.
Oh, I do. But note that you're appealing Dave's decision that what was done was in compliance with what was required for the certificate of occupancy.
Well, it was not in compliance.
Not in compliance.
Take, you know, one step at a time. I get very confused because I'm all...
No, that's fine. We're going to get through this.
All right. So what you're doing is you're saying David was wrong in issuing the certificate of occupancy because the trees were not planted ten feet, eight feet apart, as you say, was under the, what was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, right?
Yes. I grabbed six.
Yes. Yes. And that's my understa...
If we vote...
We're voting on that.
No. If we vote, that's what we're voting on. And so if we vote yes, we're saying that David was correct in the decision that he made in issuing the certificate of compliance.
Yeah. If you're voting in favor of my appeal.
If you read this motion into the record right now, if we vote yes, you are upholding the building enforcement officer's decision, okay, in reference to the issuance of the occupancy.
Right. So yes, David's right.
Yes means you're upholding him. No means you're denying.
That's correct. That's what we have to be clear on.
So yes means...
Who's on this? Us four?
Four plus...
No, I'm not.
So if you vote yes, when he reads this motion, you are saying that David did the right thing.
Right.
And we vote no, that means...
We're voting to plant trees.
We're voting to the trees have to be eight feet apart.
No, that's not part of it. All we're doing is answering this complaint.
But this was how we were told to do it.
Moving forward from there.
He's going to read a motion. If you vote in favor of the motion, you are in agreement with David. If you vote against the motion, you're saying David made a mistake.
That doesn't make sense.
Can I ask one thing? We are not trying to get Mr. Morris or anybody else in trouble. We called. We said, hey, we weren't looking to pull back the permit. We just want what was told to be done, to be done.
Stop everything. Stop. Make the motion, please.
Okay. We have a procedure that is being followed. You're here to follow the procedure that we have to follow, okay? And this does not require any comment from you. It requires the board listening to what I say and making a decision. So, no. I just want to start this thing. To make a motion, sixty-eight Mercantile Way, petitioner Eric B. Clapper, ten Sugar Pine Circle, Mashpee, is appealing the building commissioner's decision under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, eight and fifteen, to issue a certificate of occupancy based on Condition Six of the Zoning Board of Appeals' decision, S.P. twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine, on property located in the I-1 and Light Industrial Districts, MAP eighty-eight, parcel ninety-one, Mashpee, Mass. With the following, the motion, that the Zoning Board of Appeals has determined to uphold the building commissioner's decision regarding his enforcement jurisdiction with respect to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy based on Condition Number Six of the Zoning Board of Appeals' decision, S.P. twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine, for the property located at sixty-eight Mercantile Way, MAP eighty-eight, parcel ninety-one, Mashpee, Mass. And finds that the petitioner, Eric B. Clapper, who resides at ten Sugar Pine Circle, Mashpee, Mass., has not established a factual or legal basis to support the appeal of the building inspector's determination. That is the motion before the board.
Roll call vote. Second.
I got...I'm sorry. I got one question. If the vote goes against Dave's decision, as one member, if I vote against his decision, I'm not voting against him having an occupancy permit. I have no problem with the building getting an occupancy permit. My only thing is the tree spacing. I don't want to vote against the occupancy permits. And am I voting against the occupancy?
Yes.
Okay. But that's what came up in the motion, is the occupancy permit.
That's part of the motion.
Well, again, I want to...
I didn't ask you.
It doesn't matter. This is what it is.
No, no. This is between the board at this point. This motion that he just made states that it's going to uphold the building commissioner's decision regarding his enforcement jurisdiction with respect to the issuance of an issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
It's the way we have to vote.
If you vote, what we're saying is, if you disagree with David, occupancy goes.
I'd like to speak.
Roll...no, I'm sorry. We're making a decision right now.
The public hearing hasn't been closed. I have a right to speak.
Close it right now.
You're going to close it on me without speaking? Really?
We have a motion on the floor.
Just homeowners, you know.
No, no, no. It's a motion on the floor. Roll call vote. Mike?
This is a tough one for me. I don't believe that we went through the right channels, did the right thing here, but I'm not...don't want to...the occupancy thing bothers me.
Us too.
It bothers us too, but this was the way...
The motion, is that what I'm going to vote on?
That's the motion you're voting on. That's how it's at.
I'm in favor of them, but I'm not because of the occupancy thing. So I vote in favor of Dave against better judgment because the motion is overwritten.
The motion is very poorly written.
Well, then, let's...
We can't change the motion.
Was it seconded?
Why can't we talk about this?
Because it's now to the board.
No, I understand that, but now we're changing things and we're twisting things around. Now, I applied for this. I'd really like to speak.
Wait, wait, wait. Stop, please.
Please.
We've got to make a decision here based on...
Let's close the public hearing.
Wow.
Let's do one last thing. I've got to do this. Sir, you keep raising your hand. You're in the audience. I took one other person from the audience. I need to listen to you. Yes, sir. What can I do for you? Please give your name. I have to do this. Give your name and your involvement, please.
My name is Stephen Bernard. I'm a resident of seven Sugar Pine Circle, neighbor to the Clappers. I've been in observation of the hearings this evening, and I just want to, believe it or not, compliment all of you for taking the time to listen and deliberate and ask questions of all the residents and discuss among you before making a competent decision. It's a very difficult job, I know. The Mercantile has been developed over the last five to ten years quite nicely with light industrial complexes. It's just about twenty feet down Great Neck Road south from Sugar Pine Circle. And as you know, Sugar Pine Circle, I mean, Sugar Pine Circle is right on the bend of the road. Right on the bend of the road. So there is an impact to our neighborhood on a traffic basis from the development of the light industrial businesses on Mercantile. And that in itself is somewhat of a detriment, having little to do with this particular case, to the safety of the neighborhood. As you know, there's a walking path, a bike path, a running path all along Great Neck Road south that is signature to that road. And tens of people, if not more, use that road for exercise every day. And it's becoming increasingly dangerous with light industrial equipment coming in on Mercantile.
If I can just say, sir, if you could just say...
I'm getting to the point. I'm getting to my point. Okay.
Please, which is in reference to the tree planting.
Yeah. Well, this is all in reference because it's...we're talking about the detriment to the neighborhood. And now we're talking about a property that has been developed. And then there was a hearing in twenty-two where an agreement was made. And the people constructing the business argued and discussed and came up with an agreement that I believe, from the hearing of the Clappers and from the questions of the board, clearly was decided in protection of the residents of Sugar Pine Circle, of which I am one. And if now we have a situation where the owners of the commercial property are not living up to the stated decisions that were made in twenty-two, it leads me to believe that the detriment to the neighborhood is probable, that these landlords will not live up to other stipulations as we go forward. Because as you know, industrial properties, all they do is go downhill over years from use of the building, from the traffic, from the light trucks, et cetera. Now, I feel that in deference to the chair, that to indicate that this appeal is, by denying the commissioner's decision to grant a occupancy, kills it. It's not necessarily the case. It is my belief, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, if there are substantial changes to a plan, that the commercial owners of the property can come back in a very short period of time as opposed to a six months or a year, whatever that stipulation is for your audiences, that if he makes substantial changes to his plan, which would be, in this case, hopefully, in compliance to the original agreement of twenty-two.
Sir, I might be able to catch you short. I concur what you're saying.
That he could come back, so it doesn't kill...
Let me help you one better. Let me help you one better. Would you be willing to amend your motion?
That's what I'm looking at.
And strike certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, I am. I'm just trying to figure out the way to...let me suggest something.
Very simple. If you were to read that the Zoning Board of Appeals is determined to uphold the building commissioner's decision regarding the enforcement jurisdiction in respect to Condition Six of the zoning bylaws, Zoning Board of Appeals' decision, and just strike the rest of it. That will give the board's ability to make a decision based only on Condition Six.
And it will not revoke...
It will not revoke. And at that point in time, I concur with your statement, sir.
I'd like to begin with a compliment. I'm going to end with a compliment. That I believe that reasonable man rule in this case, with your final amendment, says to me that the Clapper's argument is certainly sufficient for you to deny the appeal or approve the appeal in this case, as you might be changing the wording.
Thank you very much, sir.
Please read the amended...
No, let's make sure that we have what everybody agrees we should have. That the Zoning Board of Appeals has determined to uphold the building commissioner's decision regarding his enforcement jurisdiction with respect to Condition Six of the Zoning Board of Appeals' decision for the property located at sixty-eight Mercantile Way and going on from there.
That is correct.
Has nothing to do with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, only deals with Condition Six.
It's a completely different motion.
Completely different motion.
Okay. So let's get the...before we vote, let's get the ground rules correct. A yes vote means?
A yes vote means that David made a mistake.
No.
Does not.
Should we close the public hearing?
I'll tell you. I've been doing this for nineteen years.
Close the public hearing.
You are correct.
All right. Let's close the public hearing. I agree.
Got a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All is in favor.
Aye.
If you vote in favor of the motion, you are saying to David that he followed the rules correctly and Condition Number Six has been upheld and has correctly been handled. The trees are installed correctly. If you vote against this motion, you are saying, David, the trees are not installed correctly. You need to look at them again.
Well, since I'm going to be talking to David in the future, I don't want to get mad at me. Just get the landscapers to plant some more trees. So you want to take a vote?
Well, this is what we're doing right now.
It's not up to us to make a decision how David's going to handle it. It's up to us to make a decision whether we're going to approve Mr. Clapper's appeal.
Okay, let's...sorry, let's...
Again, if you vote in favor of this motion, you are voting in favor of David, and you're saying the trees are okay the way they are. If you vote against it, you're saying the trees are not okay the way they are. What did you say, Charlie?
He's read his motion.
You read the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is everybody clear?
Yes.
Mike?
I vote no.
Okay.
No.
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 No. Okay. Thank you very much.
What happens now?
What happens now goes back to David. I presume David's going to have to deal with it. I presume he'll call the people who planted the trees or are sitting in the audience.
Do we have any timeframe?
And I presume that would be between you and David.
That's not us.
Yeah, they couldn't be done year-round.
Yeah.
We'll see what happens.
Okay, let's move on. What's next?
We wait a little bit longer. We work with our...we really want to be...
It's all good.
Who's pictures?
Oh, they came with a package. Okay.
No, that's denied.
You've got to check the right parts. You've got to have it redone.
Yeah, you've got to have that redone. It's denied. Not approved.
Oh, shit.
I followed you.
I don't know. Mary Ann, can you accept that?
Run. Let me just...
Initiate it.
Just so...